This has been, probably ten years ago. Killed him. And she's still, she still lives. But she didn't do the same thing?
Okay, I hereby call to order the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals. Looks like we have all members present and we do have a forum. I would ask the members in all those in favor, I. Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any citizen input tonight for the Board of Zoning Appeals? Other than the two items that are on there? If you have questions about those, you would be doing it. But this would be for anything else for the Board of Zoning Appeals that would be here. That, not necessarily on the agenda.
So it's only for a non on the agenda?
Well, you're here, but as far as it goes. But yeah, the item I think is on the agenda. So when we get to that, then, okay, you'll be able to speak then. Is that okay? This is for anything that's other than what's on the agenda. I think you're here for, are you here for Oak Grove? Then you'll be at the Planning Committee. We'll have a Planning Commission next and then that will have a public input then and that's when you'll speak for that. Okay?
We're really here to talk about camp downs in general. The rates and...
Yeah, and that will, that needs to come under Planning Commission, not Board of Zoning Appeals. And the Planning Commission, well, as soon as we get done with Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission will convene and then that will be the time. There'll be another citizens input time at that meeting too, okay?
Isn't tonight the planning meeting?
It is. But Board of Zoning Appeals is different than the Planning Commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals is just meeting first. Soon as we get done with Board of Zoning Appeals, we'll adjourn and then immediately go into Planning Commission.
So it's still tonight?
It's still tonight, yes.
Oh, okay. I thought it was gonna be...
Okay. Being done, we'll proceed to the first item, which is determination for battery energy storage system A1 is an allowed use in the A1 agricultural forestry district. Mr. Prentis is here tonight for Plus Power. And like I say, you've had information presented to you previously about this and hopefully you've done your research. And so basically, you know, if you understand what it is that they're asking for, if not, he's gonna give us a short synopsis and if you have questions, he'll be glad to answer. So, Mr. Prentis, if you want to go ahead and address the...
Sure. Thank you, Terry. First off, I just want to apologize for missing last month's meeting. You may remember we had to cancel last minute for medical reasons, but we're very glad to be back tonight and speaking to you again. For those of you that don't know me, my name is James Prentis. I'm leading the development efforts within TVA at Plus Power, including our projects in Tennessee. With me tonight are several other members of the Plus Power team who are available to answer any questions you may have. We're here because Plus Power is interested in developing a battery energy storage system in Jefferson County. As part of a quick five-minute presentation to you, I will discuss the four, these four topics. Who is Plus Power? What is a battery energy storage system? What are the benefits of this project to the county and its residents? And finally, a discussion of what we're respectfully requesting tonight, which is a determination from this board that pursuant to County Code Section 9.3B, battery energy storage systems are a similar use to solar energy systems and wind energy systems. And therefore, that battery energy storage systems are permitted use within the county's A1 zoning district. So who is Plus Power? Plus Power is a Texas-based company that develops, operates, and owns standalone battery energy storage projects. We have roughly 100 employees, many of whom have decades of experience developing, owning, and operating different types of power plants. We have developed three batteries in Texas that are a similar size to that of the facility we're proposing to build here in Jefferson County. In addition to that, we are finalizing construction of a project in Onahuahua in Hawaii and just last week received the necessary approvals to build two more projects in Phoenix. By 2024, we anticipate having 10 operating facilities across the country. So what is a battery energy storage system? A battery energy storage system, or BESS, is a system of lithium-ion batteries that store and distribute energy derived from the existing electrical grid. Fernando's is just revealed a rendering of what the project is likely to look. And you can see there the battery enclosures look similar to a shipping container and inside those enclosures you have the batteries stacked up. This lithium-ion battery technology has been around for decades and is similar to what you may find in your phone, computer, or electric vehicle. At a high level, these battery systems allow for the temporary storage of electricity during periods of oversupply. When, once charged, they can discharge this electricity back onto the existing electrical grid when it's needed most, during periods of peak demand, keeping costs down and electricity flowing. In terms of the benefits to the county, this project will help TVA offer continued safe and reliable electricity transmission and distribution services. TVA's electric grid is changing rapidly with the planned retirements of large coal plants such as Bull Run and Kingston. These major changes to the grid will require BESS to balance supply and demand. To put the size of our project into perspective, despite only needing 15 acres of land to construct upon, it is the equivalent of a fifth of the size of the Kingston Coal Plant in terms of electric power and can supply electricity to around 250,000 homes. Beyond these electrical benefits, there will be good-paying construction jobs created by the project. As mentioned, we are here tonight because we are seeking a determination from this board. Section 9.3B of the County Code gives this board the right to determine that a unlisted use is permitted to be constructed if it is similar to other existing permitted uses. As I said earlier, a battery energy storage system is a system of facilities collecting, storing, and distributing energy. We've reviewed your code and battery energy storage systems are not listed. However, both solar energy systems and wind energy systems are, and they are both permitted uses within the A1 zoning district. Solar energy systems are defined as a system of facilities collecting, storing, and distributing energy derived from the sun. And wind energy systems are defined as a system of facilities collecting, storing, and distributing energy derived from the wind. Therefore, pursuant to Section 9.3B of the County Code, we are respectfully asking the board to determine that battery energy storage systems are a similar use to that of solar energy systems and wind energy systems. And therefore, that battery energy systems are permitted use within Jefferson County's A1 zoning district.
Okay. Thanks, James. Does anyone have any questions to James in regards to this? Like I say, I hope that you've done some research and if you do, then now's the time, I think, to speak up.
Was not one of our concerns about fire and... It was, and I addressed that with basically, and they did have a meeting with not only the New Market Fire Department, but the, also the Dandridge Volunteer Fire Department. And after I talked with the fire chief from Dandridge, I think he was comfortable with what he, what he learned from that standpoint. There were, you know, they have had to fight fires with lithium-ion batteries, okay? So they've had to address that, as far as it goes. It may not be on this scale, but they have had a little bit of experience with that. And so basically, the training that I think that they received, the way he spoke to me was it was helpful. And so, and I asked him, I said point blank, I said, would you have a problem with this development? And he said, based upon what you've asked me, he would say, and he said, no, I would not have a problem with it. So it being located, what, less than a half mile from a school? Well, if it, if the layout looks the way that I, that I'm looking at it here, I guess, my, I guess my thing is, is that the separation between the actual pods, as far as that goes, if that took the, you know, basically allowed to give you a fire break and you contained it, to contain it into that, that was their main thing. And I think even part of the thing was, it says, hey, look, I think part of their thing was, is if, if you do have a fire, I said, it is contained in the building, it says, we can just, we can let it go. I said, as far as it goes. We may not even have, it may just take care of itself or burn itself out from that standpoint. So that was the thing. And the other was, is that, he talked about that, you know, one of the things, the pieces of equipment that they don't have is, I think is a thermal imaging device, basically, which would allow them to go in and actually look in each container, as far as that goes, and measure the heat that's on the inside, so that they would, they could pinpoint maybe if there was a problem. You know, I didn't have him come to the meeting tonight to answer those. I'm just basically going off what, you know, because I asked him, because I wanted to know the same thing that you want to know. I wanted an answer to that.
Do these batteries get hot? Do they have to be cooled or anything, like a cryptocurrency?
So there, there is a possibility of the individual cells heating up, but there's a thermal management system that sends a liquid similar to what is found in an HVAC system to maintain the temperature. And each cell and every container is constantly monitored. And if any, there are certain guardrails that are set and if the temperature rises beyond that point, the whole system gets turned off remotely and someone will be sent to the site.
Okay, so they don't have any, like, loud fans or anything?
No, no, that's a great question, because the, I think that what you're referencing, the Bitcoin mining situation, they, they have these big fans that make the noise. But with these, it's similar to, to an HVAC, but the fan isn't really what's making the noise. It's, the cooling is done by the liquid rather than the fan that's sending the liquid around the enclosure.
Okay, so in your opinion, it wouldn't cause excessive noise?
No, the...
I'm asking, I, I hope you'll be honest with me. You don't expect that they would cause any noise issues for neighboring properties or anything?
It's a great question, again. So you can, you can just about see where the containers are and in the top right corner of our site, there's a small substation, much smaller than the larger TVA substation and the electric carb substation there. There is a transformer on our site, a small, a small one in comparison to those TVA ones. That's what's gonna make the noise, but it's, it's really not gonna raise the level of noise that's already on site and definitely not beyond the noise level of the TVA site. So, and you can see there, it's up the hill, it's right next to the substation, so any of the neighboring properties won't be able to hear the noise.
Okay.
How many of these do you have scattered throughout the country?
So right now, we are operating one project in Texas. We had developed three and we own one of them at the moment. One is almost finished construction in Hawaii and by 2024, we will have 10 projects operating across the country.
Any issues with your count, though?
No, none.
What type of voltage will you be discharging?
So onsite, the voltage is at 34 kilovolts and then that's what our substation is for. There's a medium voltage transformer that steps it up to 161, which is what TVA requires in their substation.
Okay, and you just please step up to transmission voltage. You want to do anything distribution after yourself, correct?
That's correct. So the TVA, the interesting thing about this TVA substation is it connects directly to the, I think it's AEC, the Appalachian Electric Cooperative. So although our project is very much a TVA project and we're serving their transmission system, we are in effect serving that distribution substation and therefore the community at large.
One of the other, the other questions that I addressed was this, was that, you know, the project, you know, if approved and it's up and running, the question that I had was, is that after it's lived its service term, let's say for instance, or if the technology changes and everything else and this system here were not to be used, then basically what would happen to the, the improvements that were there? And my fear was, I did not want the county in some form or fashion to be held accountable for taking care of that, dismantling or taking whatever. So my, one of the suggestions I had was, was that if there was a bond in place to hopefully to take care, to make that if for something, for some reason were to happen and the county did have to step in for some form or fashion, if they had to, you know, take it back for taxes, this whatever, if it was abandoned, then the county had to do it, that there would be something in place that the taxpayer, suggestion county, would not have to bear the burden to dismantle this. Those were my two things, was basically, was, was fire suppression and that. I understood the technology as far as it sits here is now and so I didn't have an issue with it. It was really just, I guess, depending on this board, what questions they had and what they feel comfortable with and to see if they think that this is something that's appropriate in this zone. And the other thing I was gonna ask David was, is that if the Board of Zoning Appeals says, yes, this could go in the zone, but they could put requests for some conditional uses and then basically it would go to the Planning Commission to come up with those uses or with the Board of Zoning Appeals?
It'd be the Board of Zoning Appeals. You could put conditions on, on a proposal.
All right, so it's the same way when we looked at the Bitcoin, it's the same thing when we did the wind farm and the solar farm. We had those, but there was conditions, additional, conditions in there that they had to do that were above and beyond maybe some of the other things that are allowed in the zone. So that's something else to take into consideration that you have as an option, if you so desire. So I guess the question is, is that in front of you is, do you feel, what, based on what information that you have right now, would you feel comfortable with this going into an A1 agricultural district is what they're asking for? And if so, then we would need to put some, 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 some conditions, basically, on this and then it would need to be, basically, it would have to be adopted then by, since this is a zoning thing, would have to be adopted by county commission and the cities?
It would be best if we had some regulations that specifically addressed this. This is the first one of these we've got wind of or, and it's really not, we're not looking at a site plan tonight, an actual proposal. We're just determining whether this use should be allowed, and you know this, as a permitted use in the A1 district and the Board of Zoning Appeals has the power to make that decision if it deems it similar to an allowed use in that district.
Okay.
And we don't specifically say anything about substations in the A1 district, but as a matter of policy, those, we've allowed those wherever they've been deemed necessary by Appalachian Electric Cooperative, in conjunction with TVA, of course.
There was one other thing that I wanted to address here, is that they, they are requesting this to go into an A1, okay? So if you, if the determination's made, it can go in A1, we can also address at this time other zones that we might feel like that we wanted to put it into as well. And it could be an I-3, it could be an I-2, it could be an I-1 as well, and it could continue to be an A1, all right? So there again, it, once we make this determination, doesn't necessarily mean that this is the only zone that they could go in. We could, we could designate other zones for them to go into as well, in our zoning. So that's, I want, I want you to take that in consideration, you know, who are determined this, that it's just not necessarily A1. There are other zones in there that this might fit in as well. Okay. Would you lump that in with, say, solar farms? Well, you know, you look at a solar farm and basically, it, basically it uses the sun to generate power, okay, as far as that goes. And the thing is, is that some solar farms, you could actually have batteries there that actually stored that energy until it was actually needed. So if you have a solar farm and you have, and you have batteries there that are storing that, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a lithium-ion battery, there's, there's different types of storage vessels out there to store electricity on. It just happens, this is the, the type of storage system they're gonna use. But there's other types of storage systems out there and battery systems that are out there that you could use either in the solar and wind, because the thing is, is that the wind doesn't always blow and the sun doesn't shine at night. So those systems basically, a lot of times are used for the same thing, for peak power a lot of times. So they may run during the day and as far as that goes and then at night, they may store that in a battery or whatever, so that if there's, if it's a coal nit and they need the power, they would have it as well. So that's just part of, that's just part of those systems here. In this case here, TVA is generating the power. It's not solar, it's not wind, TVA's generating the power. They're just taking some off of their grid during their non-peak times, storing it for when they need peak times. And so that's what, that's what this system, that's what it serves, its purpose. And so, but battery, but wind and solar are sort of the same thing. They're all the same thing. Questions? Okay. All right. At this time, do we, I'm gonna take some questions. Do we have people here who would like, from the audience, who would like to speak in regards to this? Yes. Did you sign up to speak?
I did.
Okay. Okay.
This is Marion Knight. You are James Prentis, right? I'm Marion Knight. I live in Dandridge, right down the street. Now, I don't know everybody on this board, so I know John Neil Scarlett.
I'm not on this one.
You're not on this board, but you're just sitting here.
I'm just sitting here.
Okay. And Mark Chambers.
Yes.
I don't know you.
I don't know you either.
Marion Knight.
Brian Morgan, pleased to meet you.
Brian Morgan.
Yes.
I just, and I know Terry Renaud, he's sick of me. I don't know you.
And I'm David Williams. I'm with the East Tennessee Development District.
David.
I'm the staff for the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. And are you on this commission too? Or, no, you're just sitting there?
But Paul Lowe's mine.
Paul Lowe. You're on the other group?
Yes.
Okay. And you are?
Sue Springfield. I am on the BCA.
Sue Springfield. And you are?
Tom.
Tom.
Lakin.
Lakin, thank you.
Lakin.
Thanks. Okay. So I guess my questions are mostly for you. We were told, I was here at the September meeting and at that time, they said that this was going to be a 5,000-megawatt facility. Is that true?
No, that's, that's incorrect. The 5,000 megawatts may be referring to TVA released a request for proposals for that much energy this year.
Okay.
And that's for carbon-free resources, including standalone battery energy storage, which is what we're proposing.
Okay, so...
So this is 250 megawatts.
250. And each megawatt is a thousand?
Kilowatts.
Okay, so it's a hundred thousand watts? Is that right?
No, it's a million watts.
It's a million watts. Okay, so it's 240 million watts. Is that right?
250.
250 million watts. Okay. That, that scares me, okay? I have 40 watt lithium battery in my garage and I'm terrified because every day here, Tesla fire, can't put it out. So I'm, I'm afraid and I don't know that you can do anything to let me be left scared because I feel that lithium-ion batteries are a little frightening. The post office doesn't let you send over 11 pounds, the airlines won't let you check any in your baggage. And I, I've never understood where this A1 is. It's close to a school. Is that right? Am I lying? Did somebody say it was a half a mile from a school?
Well, it's close.
It's close to, what school is that?
Bigmont Elementary.
Okay. So I'm worried about that because I've been doing a lot of readings since September. I've read the New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Bloomberg, University of Texas at Austin, they had a big report. And the American Association for Advancement of Science, I also read the FEMA report and the Underwriter Lab report. And the FEMA report was, was quite scary because it was called "The Emerging Hazards of Battery Energy Storage Systems" and it said if one cell fails, it can be like a domino effect and cause a big fire. And, and the fires can, cannot effectively be put out with the traditional systems. Is that correct?
So what's interesting about the test of technology that we're gonna be using here, they had to go through very rigorous destructive testing. What I mean by that is destructive testing is when they force the cells to, they tried to force the cells to catch on fire by heating up a number of them and they just couldn't get, get them to light. They had to, they had to put six cells into what they call thermal runaway and one more cell, the seventh cell, went into thermal runaway and then stopped. So there's a lot of passive safety features within the enclosure that stops propagation and spreading of the fire. And that's something that is, is definitely a valid concern, but we, any, any opportunity to implement these passive and active safety features, this is what we were explaining to the three different fire departments we met with, we will continue to work with them and implement a specific emergency response plan for this project. And we also have with us today Paul Rogers, who is our consultant from the Energy Safety Response Group, who is definitely more qualified to answer some of your questions regarding fire safety, if you have...
I'm very concerned about fire and also if there's an explosion like there was in Arizona or a fire, that there is some sort of, wait a minute, I'll find it in my notes here, the battery vent gas that's supposed to be toxic that comes out and just spreads out. So these are all things that I'm scared of because I live here and I, I'd like to live the rest of my life here and I don't want it to be cut short. But, and I worry about, especially if it's close to a school, I'm, I'm worried about that. I'm, I don't give Plus Power any, and I'm not arguing with your company. I know you guys are making money based on what the federal government's, you know, this is the flavor of the week, is these battery backup systems and they want everybody to seem, seemingly have them. So I am concerned. And the FEMA report says, yeah, lithium batteries can experience thermal runaway, which causes them to release very hot, flammable, toxic gases in large storage systems. Failure of one lithium cell can cascade to include hundreds of individual cells. And then it says, "One of the biggest lessons learned for the fire service is that the utilities and commercial entities that own large battery systems are equally unfamiliar with the potential fire hazards, as well there remain many questions about toxicity of battery vent gas." So we all live here and we, we wanna continue to live healthy. And I've got nothing against you. You did a nice presentation. If I were on the board, I'd probably be, I'm a nice guy and I think we should allow this. I'm, I'm not crazy about it being in an agricultural district, even though we have solar energy systems and wind energy systems as principal or accessory uses, but they don't, as far as I know, they don't release toxic gas and they don't tend to explode. So I like to feel more comfortable. I feel, I talked to one of the fire departments and they basically said, you know, it's here, too bad, just get used to it. And so I feel like I need to speak up tonight. I don't like to speak up at these meetings. I'd rather take notes for myself, but I felt like I need to speak up and, and if they're gonna be here, whether I want them or not, I feel like we're just part of a big experiment that's going on, you know? And I'm sorry that they're shutting the coal fire and plants down. So that's, I think I've said my piece. Oh, wait, there's one more. I have a request of the board. I, I do have a problem with our firefighters being possibly subjected to some of those hazardous materials, so I wonder if there could be some sort of hazmat group that power plus, is it plus power or power plus? Plus power keeps on, onsite or near the site and they should fight the fires and not our local departments that, granted, they, they might fight little fires like my 40-watt lawnmower battery, but this is how much? 250 million watts. That's a lot of watts and that's a big fire and they could be injured. The firefighters in Arizona were injured and they, four of them were hospitalized. They did recover from their, their wounds, but you know, it could be like 9/11, the, the people who cleaned up the site, it's an unknown long-term effect. And so these are the things I worry about. I know you guys live here too. I hope you're worried about them too. So I'm gonna go sit down now because I probably spun my wheels enough. Okay? Thanks. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you for coming here and facing the music. And good luck.
Okay, I didn't, that's the only one I had who signed up to speak on this issue. Is there, was there others that didn't sign up? Okay.
I'll just stand right here. I just, I also called the fire department, and I talked to Frank. He said we've had no training on taking care of this if there is a fire, and also the potential for explosion. And if it explodes, there's nothing, there's nothing the fire department's gonna do. And so, I think we are too putting our fire department at risk. We have a volunteer fire department here. And I think we're putting those guys at risk. So, the explosion thing is concerning, and also the proximity to the school.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
My concern would be the cost of the lithium batteries themselves, and where the lithium is coming from. If this is supposed to store power for the days when we don't have enough, if there is a fault in one of the batteries, or whatever it is that defaults and blows up, or whatever causes a major destructive catastrophe, what happens to the replacement for those? And who buys those lithium batteries? There's all kinds of things out there in the universe that say, some of these batteries are $29,000 each, and how is that cost gonna be spread out for everybody that's on the electric grid, especially after one may fail? And I just would like to know where the lithium is coming from, and who's gonna be responsible for the failure of the batteries?
Ma'am, there's no cost, there's no cost to the local utilities for that. This, they're a private entity as far as that goes. So, all the costs for the batteries, they incur those costs. So, basically, TVA basically uses them as a supplier, as a backup. So, if there is, if there's any problems as far as that goes, there will be no cost to the taxpayers of Jefferson County to replace that. It would be up to the owners of this, to plus power to do that. So, Jefferson County taxpayers would not be responsible for any of the cost at all. And nor would the ratepayers be responsible for any of the cost.
Can I ask one more question?
Okay.
Who is the benefit of the power? Who gets the benefit of the power of the storage? Is it Jefferson County, or is it somewhere else?
Well, when you say the benefit of the power, I guess TVA's the one that gets the benefit of the power. They're the ones that basically, they provide the power, it goes into the battery, and then when they get ready, it goes back into their system. So, TVA's the one that gets the benefit from it. They get the.
We're not guaranteed the benefit from the power if we have power issues that occurs to Jefferson County. No, we're, we, I got you.
Okay.
You answered my question.
Because the TVA substation connects directly to the AEC substation, the county will definitely benefit from increased reliability on the distribution system.
Can we get an answer on where the lithium is coming from? How it's transported? Can we get that answer?
We buy, for this project, we're likely to buy the lithium from Tesla. And they have mines overseas, though there's definitely a big push across the states to be mining lithium locally. But I don't think that, for the most part, that lithium's going to electric vehicles.
You have no mines locally, lithium.
You're wanting to mine locally?
No, no, plus power buys the batteries from companies like Tesla. They are mining elsewhere. There are lithium mines in America, but those, that lithium's mostly going to electric vehicles, rather than nuclear.
Yes, sir.
They're still mining them, foreign companies.
Yes, sir.
They can.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I would say is, the lady that spoke of the fire department not being trained, I would ask, has the company done an R and P with the school so close around? In the event the lithium battery overheats to explode?
So, the emergency response plan for this project has not been created yet. All we've done is just had that first conversation with the fire departments. And when we come to create that plan, Paul Rogers and ESRG, I think Paul may speak in a moment.
It's not the fires that bothers me as much as the gases that come off that battery with the school so close by. That's a concern that I would be most concerned about.
Paul maybe have to speak to that question?
No, no, no. Yes.
I have a question. If comparing it to solar and to wind, but it seems like the risk that something happens to the environment is greater. So, to me, like, are you comparing apples to apples? Now, let's say there's an explosion. We've got Bigmont there, but also you have the Patriot Academy and the high school nearby. You've got every kid in our family that's raised in foster schools, lots of it. So, to me, the risk is on the two of us, the top six of you, if something goes wrong. With solar, I've never heard, you know, concerns like that.
Okay. Because there is, well, you know, there is battery storage at wind farms, and there are battery storage at solar farms as well. You just, because you just, it exists, you just don't know about it. You just haven't thought, you know, it's just not been part of the thought process, because the only thing you're thinking about is the thing that generates the electricity. You're never thinking about how the electricity is stored. Because everybody just thinks that the electricity is all the time is generated, and actually goes into the grid. That's not the case.
So, is it the same type of battery, or it's lithium?
There's different types of batteries. They're just using, they're just going with lithium batteries. There's other batteries out there. And here's the thing is, is that battery technology, I know, is changing constantly. And so, there may come a point in time where the lithium may not be the type of their battery of choice. They may would go with something else as far as it goes, which they can't, because everything is basically in pods and everything else. So, if it came to it and the technology changed, they'd just pull that pod out and put a different type of battery in. Yes?
Did TVA select our site?
I don't know if TVA selected the site. I think TVA basically just said, "This is what we need." And they put it out there into public entities' hands to try to look for it. And it just so happens that we have a TVA substation right here that would work. So.
Why do they go back to the grid, where it's not that technology, or it works?
Well, the key is, is the, is the substations. They need to be close to where they can actually tap in and not have to run new transmission lines or anything like that. They need, that's why, that's why they were looking at this area. You know? So, there's limited number of places that these basically things are gonna pop up, because we only have limited number of substations that are available. So, and that's not to say that you can't do one, but who's gonna run? You know, it's extremely hard to get transmission lines run across the county anymore, and across the state, and so whatever. So, that's why it's advantageous for these to be adjacent to substations. Yes, sir?
Two comments. First would be, if I understood the presentation correctly, there's only one from this company up there running. The commission needs to think about that. Okay? That means there's no track record. And when there's no track record, we shouldn't be running an experiment next year. The second comment that I would make is going back to the office. There was another comment around the batteries failing, and the fact that the company would replace those batteries. If this is part of the electrical career, any maintenance associated with that, any cost that they have, is a cost that gets passed on in the race to all the customers. So, it's not fair to say that those costs around those batteries don't impact customers. It does. And anything that they do around that site is gonna feed into the electrical.
Okay. Looking at the cost, maybe a good way to explain that is, they are able to purchase the excess power that TVA has that's being generated, it's not really being used at the time. And they buy that at a discounted rate, and they store it up, and then they're able to sell it back, and TVA needs it. And it's cheaper for TVA to buy it back from them than it is to generate at that point in time of peak demand. And it helps you be able to meet peak demand at those times by having that storage. Rackham Mountain is down toward Chattanooga. Similar thing, except it's hydro. And they have generators that turn into motors. And in off-peak time, they take water from the river, and they pump it to a lake up on top of the mountain, and they pump it full. And then when on-peak time comes, they reverse the polarity on the motors and turn them into generators, and they drain that, turn them into turbines, and they generate electricity to help meet demand. And it's just, it's a wise use of not generating electricity and then it not being used or sold. It gives them a way to store it, and then utilize it back when you need it. I hope I was correct in how I explained that. Okay. And that's where the reliability comes from. And then it'll benefit not only Jefferson County, but surrounding counties by having that close to us. Yes, sir?
Chairman Green, could you clarify something I think you said, I don't remember what part's in your mouth?
Yes.
And I believe you said that what they're storing is not electricity generated by solar power, nor wind. Is that correct?
They are not, no. Well, it could be. If TVA is buying solar power that's generated somewhere else, or if they were buying wind power that's generated somewhere else, and that power is what's traveling down the line, and they decide to store that in this battery, just if that were the case, as far as that goes, then yes, that very well, it could store from those where they were generated somewhere else. Yes?
Maybe, maybe not.
That's true.
Incorrect. You know, plus power's argument that what they're doing is tantamount to wind farms and solar farms. It's not that. So, therefore, I think their argument, they should allow this, and they want, is basically invalid.
Okay. All right. Me and no others. All right. Yes, sir?
Is it possible for us to respond?
Yes, I would like, yeah, I'd like for you to respond, because there were probably some questions there that probably didn't, may have not got answered, but you could probably answer now. Yes?
Yeah, so.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ben Wazell, and I'm the Director of permitting for pause power. And we understand your concerns and your questions, and we'd be happy to go through them one by one. So, with me tonight is Paul Rogers. Paul is a, Paul, can you please introduce yourself?
Yes. My name is Paul Rogers. I'm a retired lieutenant from the New York City Fire Department, where I worked on energy storage systems. I currently sit on the national codes advocating for fire service. So, thank you for the people that are looking out for the fire service here. I got your back on that. That is my key thing, is to make sure that we keep the fire service safe, extremely safe. Our company is made up of retired firefighters. Met as our main goal. As you know, we lost a lot of firefighters during my time in the New York City Fire Department. So, we wanna actually see no firefighters get lost after we go through that. So, for the people that are concerned about the fire service, I think that is really, really good.
So, how many years were you?
I was with the New York City Fire Department for 25 years. I worked on this starting in 2013. I was brought down to our headquarters. They wanted to put these energy storage systems into New York City. Your concerns were my concerns when we first looked at it, and the codes were not robust at all. So, the codes just weren't there to protect it properly. Since that, the codes have been developed. We put a lot of work and time into it. And that was 2013, not 2022. We also did product standards, which means that there is destructive testing on the product to prove safety before they went to any locations at all. So, all those layers of safety had to be proven before they actually had to go into an installation. And not to get too technical with it, but these are very robust, what they call product standards or listings. What is a listing is, if you go into your refrigerator and you open up the door, you'll see a little thing in there, right? Little nameplate. It's basically a listing that that thing is safe to go into your house, that it won't blow up like your refrigerator that has toxic materials inside of it, with the freons and things like that. So, the same thing applies here, where they have to show that these batteries are listed. For the people that mentioned all the lithium ion battery fires that you're seeing out there, I also sit on the Department of Transportation FAA. They're concerned about these things going on fire in planes. And what we're noticing is, there's a lot of counterfeit batteries coming from outside of the United States that are making their way into consumer products. They can't get into these products. They're getting into consumer products. So, those counterfeit batteries are starting to fail. We do not have that. Matter of fact, you can't have that. Every battery that goes into an energy storage system has to go through rigorous testing, has to be listed. The batteries that you're seeing on there are not listed, and they're a problem, and we see that going on. So, just a little bit about safety, and how that affects the installation itself. And the battery storage that they have here from Tesla has gone through all of those safety standards. And they've done destructive testing, and they've got it certified by a national recognized testing laboratory. Not any regular laboratory. It is called a NERD, or National Recognized Testing Laboratory. They have standards amongst themselves that they have to prove that they are worthy of doing this destructive testing to prove and validate safety of the actual energy storage system.
So, a couple of the comments were about the school nearby. That's an understandable concern.
Very big concern.
So, the batteries are located within enclosures. Can you talk a little bit more about the Warrskel fire testing, and why the committee should feel comfortable that our facility is more than safe in its location, and will have zero impact from a fire perspective, from an explosion perspective, from, I think you mentioned, from vent gas toxicity perspective? All the questions that concern that you have. So, we're gonna go through that one by one. So, 9548, can you please explain?
Yeah. So, there is a, there's a standard out there, product standard to prove safety. It's called UL 9548, Underwriters Laboratory 9548. It's a standard that everyone must follow. And it is, again, destructive testing, that they actually have to put their batteries into what they consider a reasonable worst-case scenario, a failure. Right? How would this react during a reasonable worst-case scenario? I'm sorry, I've been addressing the audience, but I apologize about that. And the testing with this particular energy storage system had really, really good results. As a matter of fact, they couldn't put it on fire. What they did is they put it into this thing called thermal runaway, right? And inside of that thermal runaway, they have to show that, you have to prove that it doesn't continue to cascade or spread, or propagate is the word they use, from cell to cell to cell. So, they put one cell into thermal runaway. There was no spread. They put two cells into thermal, simultaneously, into thermal runaway. No spread. Three cells into thermal. They went up to six cells till they finally got one to spread to the next. And if once it spread, it never went any further. So, there was very little gas. There was no fire that was actually observed in the actual testing itself. So, all of that stuff that you were concerned about with fire or explosion did not exist from this test from the UL 9548. There's a whole report done on it to make it clear for anyone who's reviewing this system. It's a narrative put out there. It is, this UL 9548 is what they call a data collection test. They collect all this data, and then they give it to the authority having jurisdiction to review the data. But they don't know what that data is all about. I can tell you, from someone that did review these things, I wouldn't know what that is. They get an engineering firm to actually put it into a narrative, so they can explain it and tell you how the data actually proved safety, and what took place as a result of step in that testing methodology that they used.
And in that test, did they not test for the toxic gases that you're referring to? So, after the test, did Tesla test for toxic gases?
Yes. So, they, so the testing that they, that they did, the toxic gases or the flammable gases that came out never went on fire. And the toxic gases that did come out, and they were very little, that came out, extremely little. They had some meters set up downwind, right? Where the wind is blowing down.
About, it was about. It was about five feet and 10 feet away.
Right. They had very, very small parts per million of these toxic gases. Just to give you an idea what a part per million is, a part per million would be about one inch and 16 miles. That's the scale we're talking about, a very, very, very small scale. So, this was at a 10-foot or 5-foot increment.
And also, I think one of the questions was, yeah, I'd be happy to answer. Here, your question.
Yeah, you said about six cells, and then seven detonated, and then it went out. How many cells are in, in, in one of these batteries? Are there thousands of cells? Are there ninety-nine cells?
Yeah, great question. So the cells are broken up into what they call modules. So they're segregated. They're compartmentalized, right? And there's numerous modules within. So that's, that's, that's very common with any fire protection, right? You want to segregate it, you want to keep it in one area so it doesn't go outside that area. And that's what they do in this situation here is, sorry if you guys.
I'm stuck.
We just want to, I may have to hold a couple up. Let me spread this a couple more in there.
So what happened in Arizona?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question.
Was it thermal runaway in Arizona?
So yes, there was a thermal runaway event in Arizona. Great question.
First question, when did that occur?
Yeah, that, that occurred in 2019, actually.
It goes from one to one to one to one. It's all the way.
Yeah, that, that's propagation. Thermal runaway is when the, the batteries, the cell, the cell is heating up, right? Heating up to a point that it can't give off the heat enough that it will actually fail, right? And then what you mentioned is that heat transfers to the adjoining cell, right? And then that adjoining cell. I don't have it. Yes, it's a technical, very technical, so I'm hoping I can.
Why do we have to have them experiment in Jefferson County? Why don't we wait and let them try somewhere else? Do you, any of you live in Jefferson County?
No, no, no.
You're based in New York, and none of you live in Jefferson. What made you think Jefferson County?
I, I, I'm only here for fire.
I mean, does anybody know what made you think Jefferson?
No, we're filling a gap. So those, those coal plants are providing electricity. And when they go offline, there will be a reduction in the amount of electricity generated. So the batteries that were building will store the energy that's on the system and provide the energy that allows for when you put your light switch in your house, it, it, it's, I learned this when I was working for a utility company, that the energy has to be, that's generated that lights this room, has to be generated immediately. The building is not, the user. So, sure.
I understand. We're small county. We live here. Y'all just live here. You don't, you don't take none of the risk. You don't live here.
Right, so that's why, and that's why we're talking about the Tesla mega pack report. We'd be happy to provide to you, to go into detail about the safety of the, of the system. I, believe me, I, I understand this question. That's why we're here standing up in front of you, answering your questions. We're not hiding. We, we want to have a conversation. And not only that, we're not a company that's gonna be selling the project. So in other words, we're, we're planning on, on operating the project.
And then that doesn't even exist. I mean, talk about the way the lithium is transferred on our roads, in tractor and trailers. How's the lithium, which is a very dangerous material, gonna be transported across our roads to account of this lithium, this plant?
So the, the lithium that we're using in our facility is somewhat similar to the lithium that's already in your cell phones, in the computers that you use.
It's not this size.
No, you know, you're right, you're right. And, and the lithium, as Paul mentioned, is safer. But we're actually using something called lithium ion phosphate, which is a, a safer product than the lithium ion material you're talking about. Chemistry with electricity. I understand.
I think.
I have a question for you. I worked in, in our plants, I built big plants, I, I gave it to 2,000 work tonne of, uh, very large gearboxes. The gearbox is about half the size of this room, okay? Chavs that are three foot diameter. They don't ever break. They do. All it takes is one person doing maintenance that, on your batteries, that, that, that do not do the job of pocket airplanes. They fail. Lack of maintenance or maintenance. To say that your batteries will never fail is wrong. Everything on earth fails some way. There's a possibility, what I'm saying is, look, they're speaking of the children and the schools. There has to be, I'm not saying don't build, but again, if there's, there's a danger there of those batteries and the gas, I don't care what you're saying, or this, batteries blow up, Tesla cars have blown up, there needs to be a procedure. This is five hours, and the school, if something like that happens, then if you turn it out, it isn't safe for everybody.
It has to be beside, it's gotta be next to a train.
Your car is gonna fail, it's gonna be a plane crash, and there could be large industries that are gonna fail, have fire, blow up, and all that. Things happen, and they will. You can't say that they won't. I've seen it myself, and I did say that, I, because I would never say nothing. I was in, was it that things happen? Well, that's the way they came across. I'm not down with this, I'm just gonna say, it doesn't matter. How many, how many say, I see you put it in it, how many times have this, this is inspected? They used to fail. All Texas, with your, with serum, and then it goes through one cell to the next cell, then you're four cells, you know what I'm saying? So the procedure of safety, procedure of positive fire, it has to be there.
It's, it's a good point, and, and this is where we have layers of safety, right? We have this typical battery management system that's constantly monitoring, monitoring the battery, checking how the battery, if there's something going on, which shuts it down.
I understand what you're saying, they're just with the county or the surrounding area. Procedure of something, if something happened, has to be in place with the adjoining schools, neighborhoods, or whatever. The fire department, yes, they have to be trained because they have to know, I can't, I can't go in there, I can't go in there, I can't do this, or, you know, use water, you know, I'm just saying. And that just means you go, you and the county, and it has to be on paper of how things have to be considered that there's something happening.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with that. Like, you know, the emergency response plan will address that. There's gonna have to be talks with the school, but personally, I don't see it getting that far. I've been through 25 years of emergency response, but I think that is a better caution than definitely.
Right, that's where, that's where I was going.
Now, who's gonna be monitoring this system? Is it gonna be somebody on-site monitoring it 24/7? Or is that gonna be something that, somebody's gonna be in Texas monitoring?
So we, we will hire, so, two parts to the question. So the first is, we'll be monitoring it 24/7, and they will monitor it, and the, and the provisions that are monitoring this, we'll be monitoring. But we will also hire local electricians and people who are familiar with the utility industry, who can, who monitor the site in every case. It's unlikely if I don't.
So if something goes down, you lose one of your monitors, somebody's gotta be there to fix it.
Right, so we have, the emergency response plan that Paul mentioned lays out exactly what would happen in case of an emergency.
It's, it's supposed to be a fail-safe, and if the DMS stops communicating with the emergency system, then we don't charge you this. And that, that's where, you know, it's built in fuses, and, and there's a lot of private stuff inside of the, inside of this that, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's a good idea, but this, this all has to be.
So if you're communicating from a remote place, is this like the little lady that falls down and pushes a button, and the person on the other line says, we're sending help? And in all that time, you lose all that time in reaction to what is actually going on in the location? So you're gonna have a failure at the location, it's gonna be contacted the person remotely, and then the person that's remotely monitoring it is gonna have to call somebody back here to take care of the problem. And in the meantime.
So the systems have, I'm the director of, of, of FDA, and systems have like three different layers of, of safety in this time. There is one layer, one from the remote monitoring, and then the people that will come inside. So if there's a problem, as Paul mentioned, it will disconnect immediately, the systems and the cell local, independently approved and controlled. That software that just shuts it down, and you won't let it do anything. So we won't.
Does that stop a fire?
It would stop any power that will come into it, so any, like, additional energy that will come into it, the system will stop coming.
But is the system's energy, can they suck the energy back out so that the fire doesn't continue?
Well, that is the, the testing on propagation, right? They have been tested for propagation.
I think, I think your question is, can you drain the energy?
Well, it just, it seems silly to me because if the energy is already stored, and you have a facility where you can shut off the energy, that so it's not supplied with anymore, you've got all these batteries that have already stored this energy. If there's a combustion reaction from one cell to another, then you already stored energy that you can't call back, that's gonna cause a catastrophe. It just makes sense to me. You stored it, it's gonna hurt you.
Well, I can kind of understand what you're saying, but yet, I know y'all be able to take, if one battery caught on fire, you saw the heat, because you had your, your senses, you would be able to see the heat and be able to shut that battery individually off by itself.
Way earlier.
So these batteries would be off by themselves, so would call.
Yeah, I mean, we would know that way earlier than any prior.
I'm just trying to explain.
Yeah. Even close to, and thermal runaway event doesn't always mean you don't apply. Thermal runaway doesn't necessarily. I do want to address one of the points.
So as you'll see on our, on our photo simulation, that we're not building one building. So we're not building one large building for batteries that are stuffed in a large building. The reason for that is that if there was an event in one enclosure, it's not gonna spread to another. So the enclosures are, are that have specific distance that where if there was an issue like there was a, that it would not spread from one enclosure to another enclosure, let alone to, you know, a property, let alone to the cell. And that's what, to your point about.
Like, my point on R and P is, those batteries have nickel and other alloys in there. Nickel is one of the extremely hazardous substances. It's on that list. So that's all I'm asking. Has there been an R and P submitted or looked at with a school so close behind you? Something does happen, or when it does happen, is it gonna affect the school, whether it's downwind, whether it's upwind? You're gonna have to have it anyway. I just wondered, has it been presented to this committee?
So part of, you, what's the, what's the?
Risk management, uh, risk management plan. Okay, for extremely hazardous substances, your battery still consists of a lot of things. Nickel's one of them. 10,000 pounds, the reportable's one pound, but 10,000 pounds, which I know you'll probably be well over in nickel, is gonna have to be, you're gonna have to do it. Has that plan been done?
So we're not using, you might be referring to nickel, magnesium, nickel. Okay, so, so we are not using nickel, magnesium, cobalt, we're using lithium ion phosphate. The, the point is that, so you refer to nickel, because we don't have nickel in batteries.
Perfect.
The second thing is, as we, as we discussed earlier, the large-scale fire testing that we completed demonstrates that.
It has nothing to do with the fire. My issue is the school. Make sure all the product that's in your battery, because it's one battery, it's whatever you put there, however many cells, you've gotta add that total volume up and submit that. Okay? Bottom line, you gotta have a program on-site for the EPA, but more importantly, it's for your protection, it's for the kids' protection. So just be aware.
We, we would be happy to have additional conversations here.
Well, just like right now, I just told you, the lithium batteries are a hazard to the environment, and they are controlled by the Department of Energy. So they all are hazards. That's what you're saying, man. So the, the procedure for this hazard needs to be out there. So it's controlled.
So you're going to the automotive industry, right? S A, society, automotive, I think it is. This, this protective energy storage, we did not, we went above and beyond any type of industry. What might be in here?
I understand what you're saying, but then I guarantee you that there is a hazard. There is. Nothing battery, and I guarantee you there's a hazard. We look it up, and we don't know nation. We just want, we just want to know if you have the procedure and taking care of that problem that you have.
It has to be an emergency response.
Fire, the market, you're familiar about.
I'll let you shoot. Any hazards that are associated with this will be addressed in emergency response plan, and it will be reviewed or redrafted, put together by us, and it will be reviewed by the, by the Fire Department.
We, we proactively before this meeting, have representatives of the New York and Market, from the Danbridge Fire Department, from the Cincinnati Fire Department, because we want to have a, a conversation with the community to make sure that.
My issue is.
Yeah. Guys, okay, I, I understand what your questions are talking about there. That would probably be something that would, if, if this is done, that will probably be something that will be addressed, that may be a part of the process of going through for it to get a site plan approved. I, I, so I, I think we could probably keep going on this around and around as far as that goes, but I think basically, we get the gist that basically there needs to be an emergency plan that is part of this process, which is probably what this board was gonna decide to, as part of it anyway, okay? So we understand your, your fears and qualms that you may have on that, but I think that's gonna be addressed, would be addressed if this board so decides to go that way, okay? Because I, I know we're sort of chasing the, the same thing here, but in a roundabout way, we, we understand that, that there can be a plan in place as far as that goes, and it, and it may, and it may go further than just basically the local fire departments. It may go to the emergency management as well, so, i- i- in that instance. It would be addressed as basically like any other type of industry that would be located in this county that may have something that may be hazardous, that, that's, that's already addressed. So this, the same issues that you have here would be addressed as well. Okay. At this time, I, I think, I, I think what we've spoken, there's been some good points brought out, and I hope that basically the members on this board have, have heard what's been said, and so, you know, but, but the key is, is the bottom line, is that we have to make this, we're, we're called upon to make the decision at this point in time whether or not we feel like we're comfortable with this in an A1 zone. And if so, being in an A1 zone, you feel like there needs to be conditions that be placed on this as well. And if you're comfortable with coming up with those conditions at this current time, or is it something that we need to accumulate as far as that goes, and maybe even have, I don't know, a special work session maybe possibly, David, to, to come up with something for that. But the thing is, is this, is, is they have asked us whether or not we feel comfortable with this going in an A1 zone, and because they need this to know whether or not to proceed to the next step, okay? For the. Be determined that this, this system here, because we need to put it in some zone as far as that goes, whether or not this is the particular zone we want it in, or it's other zones. And so that's the answer that they're looking for tonight. Now, the answer they're looking for tonight is that whether or not we're saying, yes, we feel comfortable with going there, but do we need to put some conditions on this for it to go there? Okay? Should I elaborate any further than that, David, or is that pretty?
No, I, I think the thing is, is that I think we probably feel, at least I feel a little less comfortable with what kind of conditions ought to be put on it than I do that going in the A1 zone. The A1 zone would not necessarily be a problem because it needs to go where, near where substations are located, but you don't, at the same time, want it to be near housing developments and that sort of thing, I don't believe. I'm not a chemist. I, I should have taken a chemistry class once in my life, but I didn't, biology instead. But anyway, some of the questions that have been raised tonight kind of have got me thinking about it. I don't feel like I know as much about this as I would like to before I made the decision. I, I would be more comfortable taking it under advisement, and I wouldn't want these people to have to come into town again for this, but I'm a little uncomfortable with the, with the situation, and I don't want it to be conflict with, you know, adjacent land uses and that sort of thing. I think it's an important thing. I think with energy issues being the way they are in this country, it's better to conserve and, and hold power for when it's needed than it is to just keep generating power that may or may not be used. And so in some ways, I think this is a really, probably a good thing, and not a whole lot different than a substation, but you know. But you know, with the concerns about the lithium batteries and anything that they might give off, that that might be a concern for for the board and is and it's obviously one for some of the public. I didn't give you really, I don't think, good direction on that, but I tried to explain where where I'm coming from.
I think I'll make a motion that we approve then in A one. As long as in a contingent of all an emergency action plan being agreed upon by all entities involved. Okay. And if that needs to be amended, we can. I think it would be amended also to other items such as setbacks and things of those natures that we have already in place for some of the other simpler similar type things that would go along and basically, you know, proper fencing for it to keep, make sure that people just can't have easy access to it. So those and setbacks and things like that. So those are the types of things that we would need to add to this to to do that. And, you know, from that, will we be a hundred percent safe? Probably not, but everything that we do here, we're never a hundred percent safe. There's always something somewhere along the line that that basically, because we're never a hundred percent. We never will be. It was just like Brian was talking about, you know, even the mines, there's things there that are not safe and everything else, but it's an industry, we have it here and we live with it on a daily basis. So, uh, so we do have, we do have a proper motion for this to go into the A one zone with an emergency plan and I think other contingency items to be determined. And that would probably come from a work session with the Board of Zoning Appeals. Probably maybe at the next meeting to address those as far as that goes. So I do that, that's the motion that's that's on the table and is a proper motion.
I'll say.
And a second.
So you mark.
Yes. Yes. So is there any discussion regarding this motion as far as that goes?
So we have to be okay with the emergency action plan?
We would. Yes, we would. Okay, so. Miss Sue, you're good or you got questions?
We can't put it in another zone or look into the stuff of putting it in another zone that's not going to be close to.
Well, we can, we can add it to other zones, but they have requested for it to go into the A one. Okay, that is their request is to see if it can go in an A one zone. That's what we're trying to determine. Later on, we can add it to other zones if we would like to, but that is the request for tonight. Is it allowed into the A one zone?
Looks like we've got a question back there in the far left corner.
We're done, we're 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 past that.
So when will their emergency action thing be ready?
Well, it would have to be ready before they would, we would approve a site plan.
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would have to be, it would have to be ready before we would approve a site plan. Yes, so they're looking for some direction, so, all right. Anything else? All right, you want to call it? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ayes have it. So we will, as of now, we're going to determine that we're going to A one zone with the conditions to come before you as far as an emergency plan and other items that we feel pertinent to this type of thing in this zone. Okay, all right. Are you ready to move on?
Yep.
The next item is a variance request of fifteen to twenty feet from the front property line for a garage to be constructed to ten twenty-two. Lake Ridge Drive damaged by Samuel and Pamela Moore.
The Moores is. Come on up there. Hold the American.
Terry, can I ask, who all voted for that? We have two, two against, I think.
You can get that, if you'll get that information just as soon as this meeting is over.
Okay.
I can tell her if they want to.
Well, let's just wait.
Okay. Before there's no difference.
I did.
Okay, the others. It's okay.
The Moores.
All right, these are the Moores that, when me and David went out there today.
Excuse us.
Yeah.
Please.
Lot down here, we got a meet to go here. When me and David went out there today, I misread the thing. I thought you were wanting to build in front of the house, but you're not.
No, sir.
It's a, it's a, me and the camp, front of the house was no problem for sure. But if you'll see on your map there, it's an odd shaped lot and I guess that's the only place you could even try to put a garage.
Yes.
But do we know how many feet for sure you need from the road? Because you say ten to twenty, but I don't.
Well, we we requested the fifteen foot variance.
You think fifteen from the road would be?
Is that from the roadway or from?
Well, it'd be.
Yeah.
Road right away.
Yes, sir.
The road itself?
Yes, sir.
It's the road itself, so it'd be a little.
So it'd be fifteen foot maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
So that's what you're.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So they're asking for the fifteen foot.
Variants. That's fair. And the building would still be located approximately twenty feet off the road.
Okay, right, so there you go.
Looks like you have a bank if you get too far.
You do, you do. And what we're trying to do is comply to the T V A.
Yeah, I was wondering about T V A.
Requirements of the one oh seven. And you can see on your drawing about twelve foot of the building towards the lake would still not comply. So we were going to bring in fill with shale and fill that up, bring it up to the one oh seven.
You checked the T V A on that.
I I've talked to him, yes, sir.
Chairman, I don't see a problem with it. I don't think they have really any of the, any other options in the topography, I think, would justify it.
Well, basically, you know, right now, even to put it in there, they're going to get some of the T V A variance.
Right.
So.
And I don't think this would, this would not adversely affect any other properties.
I don't think, okay.
In my opinion.
Okay, so everybody comfortable with that, everyone you're looking at the map now? Okay, any questions for the Moores? If not, I'll entertain them.
I make a motion, we accept.
A motion? Second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, thank you for the board.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
You have a motion?
I'll take it, sir.
All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. David, I'll give you a minute and you'll tell me when you're ready to roll and we'll go right to the planning commission.
Seven twenty.
All right.
All right.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
I hereby call over the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission having a forum present. All members are here. I would ask the members to have an opportunity to review the minutes. Any changes, corrections, please note, otherwise I'm looking for approval. I got a motion for approval? And a second, proper motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. The next item is a citizen's input for anything that's not on our agenda tonight. And I do have some input cards here for for something, for some items here that are not on our agenda. And I pretty much know what it's about, so I'm asking if everybody that signs up wants to speak or do you have a spokesman?
There's a couple of us.
Okay, your name is?
Carmen.
I'm sorry, come up to the. Okay, Carmen Carmen Lickte?
Carmen Lickte, yes.
Okay.
I live in the Oak Grove area here and we have, today we want to basically raise awareness and concerns to the planning commission of conflicting zoning and development standards with regards to campgrounds that we've discovered in going through all your zoning regs and whatnot. We reviewed the zoning resol- resolution, April twenty twenty-one document, the land use plan, the growth boundary map and the city of Dandridge zoning ordinance. And we want you to understand that today we don't want to be griping. We're basically here in the spirit of protecting the county, the county body government, the residents, property values, quality of life, and ensuring the best use and development of county agricultural land, positioning the county for healthy growth and development that everyone can be proud of. Okay, so starting off with the land use plan under zoning on page one oh one. It states the district regulations are designed to require that specific land uses are allowed in certain zoning districts in order to encourage the clustering of similar types of developments and prevent the conflicts that can arise when incompatible land uses locate near each other. It further states that properly drafted and administered zoning regs effectively guide the locations and quality of growth in the county, which sounds fantastic. This says that the county does not want to mix apples and oranges, commercial, residential within a zoning district to protect existing abutting property owners. But then when you move on to your regs, specifically the A one, there is not a, an intent and purpose defined there. And then the list of permitted uses includes commercial items such as campgrounds. A well-intentioned zoning reg would not include items that mix land uses. Mixing ag residential land uses with commercial is really not clustering similar types of developments to prevent conflicts. Parcels zoned in agricultural are not, should not be viewed equally. Some of these are in predominantly residential areas that already exist. Some are off major state highways where traffic and safety concerns are already an issue. Some have topography characteristics that are conducive to environmental concerns, depending on what's going to be developed there. So any parcel zoned agricultural where land use being considered is not similar to what's surrounding it, especially if the land use is commercial that generates high volume activity, traffic, noise, should always go through a rezoning request. The next conflicting points that we identified were in the county development standards for planned unit developments and RV parks. In in the planned unit development document, it says that RV parks are considered P U Ds. There's some standards in the P U D section seven dot four C that would really be appropriate to include in the RV standards, but it's it's not there. So one question we had was do both the P U D and the RV standards apply? And second, in the RV park standard section M under drives, it says accessing an RV park shall come off a county road and in no case come off a residential subdivision. One of the RV parks under consideration for a parcel is off a state highway, not a county road. Next, we learned that because this parcel's in a growth boundary, the city planning commission is the government body over the project versus the county. So we went ahead and reviewed the city zoning regs too, and I think it's important for you to understand the conflicts we identified there. Their agricultural district permitted use does not include RV parks. Rather, they're listed under their codes B two, B four and R three. Their development standards for RV state parks, P U Ds, and they have regs for P U Ds. And their open standards for RV parks it states. These two hundred feet sight distance, visibility, clearing, clear. actions along the road giving access. The one referring to in our area might just have that issue attached to it. So in the, if it's in the growth boundary, which zoning and development standards apply and which planning commission is responsible? Questions I have understood. So the bottom line is we believe these regs and standards are significant in closing. To address these discrepancies and avoid any legal risks, we believe it's in the best interest of both the county and the city to place a moratorium, a moratorium on RV parks, remove our P, RV parks from the county's A one code altogether, treat them as as a zoning change request, which allows the county and the public to be engaged in the process and county commissioners to ultimately hopefully based on all factors. One last comment or or, yeah, it's a comment. Any developer, whether local or outside, that truly wants to partner with a community that's scoping out land available for a campground, who sees a parcel that would directly abut existing residential homes on all sides of half of that land, would walk away from that parcel. And any that would not do this, in our opinion, is really not here to partner with the community. It's a clear sign their motivation is purely what's in it for me. So it's the government's, our local government's responsibility when assessing any development projects within our city or county to ensure win-win relationships are a factor in that decision-making process. And as well as in developing regs and standards, all those should also be done in the spirit of win-win outcomes for all residents of the community. So that's my feedback today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I need to address is that we have several people talking. And typically I use a time limit. If you can keep your comments until into three minutes as far as it goes. So the next, Mark Lickte, are you going to?
She finished up for me.
Okay, Beth Nelson?
I have to show you a whole other map, can I see that?
You may.
I want you all to look at this, just, I just want you to look at it. Can you help that for me? You got it, okay. So I'm here at Beth Nelson's Strawberry Plains. I'm here once again tonight to talk about zoning issues in our county. And you all know we've been here before. We're here due to inconsistency in the land use plan and using the land use plan for the reason it was created. My question to you is why? Why do we keep doing the same things over and over again without regard for the residents of this county and not upholding the land use plan? We're not clustering similar types of developments as the land use states. When looking at the number of campgrounds in this county, and there are twelve, there's twelve, they all have issues and many of those issues have been stated here. I've heard you state the issues here. I've heard them in county commissions stated. We have campgrounds thrown out all over the county in different areas. We have campers living full time when they're supposed to stay twenty-nine days and we have no way to monitor that, none. We have dumping sewage on the ground and obviously issues with surrounding neighborhoods with transient populations. RV parks are in the developmental standards and they're allowed in A one as is subdivisions. And now we have a B S system allowed in A one. Those are not like properties. What happened to clustering? My question to you is why is a RP, RV park not in a commercial district? Commercial zoning states the definition as in the land use plan is providing services for a fee. You're providing services for a fee when you have a campground. An RV campground, tent camping, I don't care what kind it is. If you wanted to have A one camping, that was made intended for people that had farms to have a few campsites on their farms. But what's happened is we've put RV parks in our, in A one. So how, you tell me how that's not commercial. I'm having a hard time understanding that. The other thing I want to talk about, and we never talk about this, is the property rights of all these citizens that have just spoken up and they've spoken up very loudly. Why do we continue to disregard the property rights of the citizens that are already here in this county? What about the current rights of those owners and their welfare? Again, as stated in the land use, it says to best promote the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity and welfare of the inhabitants of this county. How can a transient population that uses an RV campground promote the same similar lifestyle as the current owners of properties in Jefferson County? I noticed RV parks have no restrictions on noise. They have absolutely no way to monitor for cleanliness. And I talked to Terry, I talked to you about that. We have no way to monitor this twenty-nine stay. And now you're going to consider a six month stay RV park. They have no way to deal with intrusive behavior and obviously the length of stay. The setback for the property line is fifty feet. Fifty feet from your property could be an RV site. Fifty feet from all of these people and all these other people have got, these are their homes. They're their homes and you're going to put an RV site fifty feet from their property line. Really? So any home in the county that bets up to an RV. So any home in the county that bets up to an RV is now going to be devalued. You can't tell me, and I know you say all the time that zoning does not affect property value, you can't tell me that these people that are butted up to a RV campground at some point, that they'll be able to sell their homes for the appropriate value. There is no way, because you're not going to buy a house butted up to an RV park. I'm sure none of them would. Have never thought in their minds that an RV park would be in their background. What about the property rights of those owners? There was also a 10-foot wide buffer of trees. I'm not sure a buffer of any size without some type of tree size and more depth could do anything to mitigate the issues with an RV site right behind their house. I don't see how that can happen. Those need working on regardless.
How about 30 seconds, please?
I have a hard time understanding why we seem to have propensity to try to take care of people from other states. And what we do is not taking care of our own tax-paying citizens. We need zoning reform. We have to do better. We have to do better. I don't know how to do it, but I mean, it's continual. We're here all the time stating the same things, and then we disregard what people just said about battery storage in A1.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been said.
It's been said, okay. Okay, Roger Campbell?
I hope to wait for the last. Try to be as transparent as I can with you gentlemen. It's wonderful to be a resident of East Tennessee. My story starts with, and this is the truth. I came in here looking for a home, retired from the coal mines, retired Vietnam vet, and I asked God a long time ago that I could have me a new home before I left this world. So he gave me 345 leaper overlook. The RA Lakeway put me in, it was so easy. I wished I could show you how easy it was for me because I knew God was in it. And my wife is a schoolteacher, and you probably hear from her, Jefferson High. And we have enjoyed living here with this type of neighborhood. I know it's real conservative, I love it, love the people. My concern is this, I live among these wonderful people. And I preach in all your jails and your prisons and some of your churches, everywhere. God has opened up many doors for me here in East Tennessee. And I realize the spirit and also the physical part and emotional part is about to be disrupted possibly. And with me, they give me support. They're very wonderful neighbors. I mean, this is a model neighborhood, Facebook, one of the greatest places in the world to live. Fine people. I know a lot of prisoners and a lot of other people in this county. Know your shares real well, worked with them, worked on drug programs, done a lot of things. But I live in this community where this is possibly could happen, and I'm afraid it's going to disrupt the spiritual, emotional value of that place. And I'm sure that you love where you live at. And if you've got a troubled child, you try to find ways to really settle that thing back down and get it on the right track. And I'm asking you to consider us and how we feel and what we have. And let us build on that, let us have that, let us keep that. I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit emotional. But I love it here. And I hate to see anything disrupt it in what we have. We do have business, we do have a fantastic neighborhood, and we love it that way. And I'm sure you've heard about it. If you haven't come and visited, we'll be glad to cook you a meal and treat you right. And that's the way it should be. And we don't want to lose that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Catherine Campbell?
Good evening, and thank you for your time and for listening to our concerns. I want to share a little bit of the research that we have done in an effort to see if there was a similar issue or a problem that others were facing in other areas. And it's isolation, topography, and things like that. They have two agriculture districts, but neither use and the other longer-term urban-type development which has increased public services. The other district where single-family rural residential development has already occurred encourages a compatible relationship between agricultural and rural residential without encouraging commercial development or multifamily development to avoid conflicts of mixed land use. Not all agriculture, as I'm sure you are aware, in Jefferson County is the same. This may be, we're asking, a serious consideration for the Jefferson County governmental board to consider because not all available, as we've said before, agricultural land the zoning department, they actually are going to do a complete rewrite of their zoning regulations, again, because they are still finding weaknesses in their regulations and their standards. As with most things, they need some tweaking sometimes. They are having issues with tiny homes, Airbnbs, and compliance of short-term stays in campgrounds, even though the standard for Jefferson County says that they are limited to 29 days. After the 29 days, they can pack up and move to another pad and spend another 29 days. So that's, you know, it can continue like that.
Fifteen more seconds, please.
All right. In closing, I would just like to say that proactive measures taken now by this governmental body is key to minimizing risk and avoiding irreversible damage to the county and county residents. Jefferson County does not already, does already have 12 campgrounds, so I'm going to ask you a question, and then I'll close. How many more campgrounds does Jefferson County need?
Okay, thank you. That's all I had here who signed up, so thank you for your input. So we will go ahead and proceed.
Does she read the agenda?
As far as now, we'll go into new business. The first item is a final plan for a 17-lot subdivision located on Harrison Ferry Road and Windjammer Road in White Pine by Chad and Reagan Law.
Chad, we'll get you to sign it. Here's the sign, I'm going to do.
Thanks for our best clearing them out.
Come on over here, guys. Okay. Oh, there she is.
Windjammer Road.
Let me see, it looks like Bill Shockley, is that possible?
Yeah.
No, Billy Nye, okay.
And then we should have a signature over here for Tom Carter.
Last one through 16.
Right there. So it's the signatures that we need.
What's your name, Tom?
Yeah.
You see how many bedrooms it says there?
I don't know what it says on here. It doesn't say.
Okay, but all lots are.
Yes. And I'm assuming
All lots in this subdivision are approved.
Tom, yeah, he signed it.
Was it three bedrooms or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what. Five thousand square foot home or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
And the garage.
Yeah.
Three-car, unattached garage. Down to the t頑 to your deep site plans, you know, you know, the similar blocks are shaded.
That's reserved area.
No, that's primary and reserve.
Primary and reserve, okay.
Okay, it doesn't show the pins here, but it says all corners.
Really shaded.
See, that's just a point.
We didn't get a shade.
That's okay, I mean, he's got it.
Up here, yeah, yeah.
I mentioned all corners unless, no.
Right, yeah.
So, okay, I wanted to make sure we're covered on that.
Which means it's newer, I'm guessing, than the old ones. He's designated.
Yeah, looks like that, yeah.
Mr. Long and I, we've tweaked it several times to make everything work out where we can be, and kind of issues for the house site and site location. Matter of fact, it's a big lot.
There's a 10-foot, I mean, geez, maybe two of the long hall parking lot inside our lot lines.
Yeah.
Fuck, send that, start hitting, mark them on there, but technically this one should be where it's 100 feet wide. We can make sure that handles when the houses I don't know, I wouldn't call that a fatal area.
No.
Okay. Same with this one.
Yeah. And all the lot sites, they meet the requirements.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is our one, this is our one.
Yeah, we had this, yeah, we had this The only thing he did was, is he had to change people up.
And there's a six-inch existing six-inch water line, it looks like, as I recall. That may be a fire hydrant. Okay.
All right.
Okay, Chairman, I'll recommend for a final approval of this final plan.
Okay.
Looks like it meets all the requirements.
Any questions? Okay, so if not, then I'll entertain a motion for approval or denial. I got a proper motion.
Set.
And second, any other discussion? Being none, all those favor say aye. Any opposed?
I think you want to go ahead and sign that. Not that many out there.
Here's the, here's the signature copy.
Yeah, let's see him sign here, and I'll take your other.
Is that, is this just, is this
Yeah, you sign that.
You need a pen, don't you? Yeah, I need a pen, pen.
This one doesn't have the other signature. No, she got it. Right, you were taking it, you want to try?
You ready to go ahead and move ahead, David?
One second.
He's a son of a frey ox. There. What's that that I, what's that here? Okay.
Okay, moving on. The next item's going to be a final plan review for lots two, three, and four, the John W. Fetsa property on East Duplin Valley Road in Jefferson City by DDJ General Partnership. Do we have anybody here representing?
Yeah, I've got it. I mean, Dale Carter's not here. Y'all got copies in your packet of it, here's the sign. Or copy.
This was one that they were going to do like 10 lots or 12 lots, I can't remember how many, and have to build a road, but they decided against it, and they did two five-acre tracks in the back and those three in the front.
But if you notice in there, this one has the little box, it's the building set, is the new guidelines.
That's your new guideline, yeah.
So that area that they've got marked there is saying that it meets all the guidelines for a house site.
Within the setback requirements.
Within the setback requirements. So anybody comes to us and says they don't have a site to build on, this says differently.
We might need the 911 coordinator to sign this, but
Okay.
That'll be
Yeah, before it's recorded.
Everything else is fine.
You don't need the 911 on that, it's already a road, and they're not building roads. Is that what you said?
So they'll just issue, they'll just issue addresses when they get their building permit.
They only get the addresses when they build the house.
They do, yes. On existing roads, yeah.
I got you, that's fine. Okay, I'll recommend approval of the final plan, Chairman. Everything's in order.
Questions for David or anything?
Are they getting back to those little tracks?
There's rightaways going back, they've already recorded two, they're over five acres, so they didn't have to come from us.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. So moved, I got a proper motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion, I'm just, all right, all those favor aye? Any opposed? Okay.
You sign that. Why did you sign it? Save me some, right?
Item, moving on, item C is, item C has been rolled. We'll probably address that at the next meeting. Okay, the next item is item D, which is discussions, the change in the R1 rural residential minimum square footage requirements. I was the one that asked to put this on here, and the reason I did was this, because all those people that were here tonight basically were upset because our zoning basically didn't help them, okay? And if you remember, the last meeting that we had here, we had a whole room full of people, that there was a development was outside the growth boundary, and the best thing that could have happened to them was that property being rezoned to R1, but we were not saying outside the growth boundary, we're not going to rezone to R1 because of the density that's there. Okay, so you had to look at what, the reason I put this on here was because I felt like to protect those people, the best thing that could have happened was, was for that property to be R1. All right, but our things against R1 is it says we don't want more houses because the density's higher. So you had to pick your poison. Do you want five more houses, or do you want something else that you don't want in a residential development? So my thought was, is that if you look at our R1 zone, and David, if you look at that in there, it determines when something's zoned to R1, the site size is based upon what? If it has utility water, has utility water sewer, or utility water and septic, okay?
It goes out of 20,000 square feet in that case, yes.
So there's different sizes for that, okay? So why not then said, my thought was is that, all right, so let's say we have some R1 that might be in a residential area, but it's outside the growth boundary, but we're looking at the density, we don't want, the density is high. So what if we said, okay, you have an R1, it has utility water, all right, so let's say instead of it being A1, it has to be 40,000 square foot, why couldn't we have somewhere between 25,000 to 30,000 square foot, but still just puts for every acre, you're only going to get one house, okay, based upon that? Would that be something that would suffice both things? It keeps the density down some, but it protects the people all along doing that? And that would just be for properties that are located outside the growth boundary if county commission deemed appropriate to rezone the property. So I was looking at a way to come in and to be a compromise to some form or fashion. Yeah, it helps your developer, he's going to get a few more lots, okay, but it also protects your residential developments as well. And so I'm just throwing it out there. If that's something you think's pertinent, it's not something we're going to vote on tonight, but I'm just throwing it out there to see if you've got other ideas, whether you like this idea, just, so that's what I'm looking for. And that was my reason, because I knew, I knew those people last month were disappointed because of what was, what happened per se, and I can guarantee you, the people that were here tonight were disappointed, okay? But the thing is this. But the thing is this, you know, the re, the property has to get rezoned to R one, so there's, there's a safety check right there. Just because we make the recommendations far that goes, and we're saying, so we're trying to keep the density down outside the growth boundaries, we are, this would do that, all right, if, if it's adopted. But the other thing is, it would protect res, existing residential developments that are R one already outside the growth boundary, it would protect them to a certain extent, to allow only the things that are in R one, which is basically singly family residential, churches and schools. Is that correct? So, that's, that was my thinking, o, only thing, and I, I'm trying to, to, if that's a compromise, maybe it is, I don't know. But I, I, I understand people's reservations about R one zoning in, in the county because of the density and, and the extra traffic. But I'm thinking, you know, if I lived there, would five more houses be a detriment to be in, instead of something that maybe could come into an A one zone? And, and that's, that was my reasoning for this very thing right here. Uh, so, I, I, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there in front of, if, if you've got other ideas and, and thoughts on this, please speak up. Because, like I said, that, that's the reason I, that was what I, my thinking was. So, uh, you know, I, I, I just, myself, I've never been a proponent, I never liked the growth boundary. I, I, you know, I understand it, a, as far as that goes, and I understand its relation into the long-term plan and everything, but I, to make, sometimes it just doesn't, just doesn't make sense as far as that goes. It just, uh, sometimes it doesn't protect us as much as I think that, that sometimes people need to be protected. And sometimes they don't think this, but sometimes a lot of things that we do, do protect them to a certain extent. Uh, so, but that, that's my thinking on that. So, uh, like I say, I'm not looking for any kind of action, I'm just throwing it out there, and if it's something that you all think, that you want to proceed with, and we can, I can put it on the agenda again, if we have a work session, I can throw it in there to, to work with as well. I really don't want to create and designate a new zone, I would just like to say that if, in the R one zone, in the growth boundary, out of the growth boundary, we already have different things in there for the utilities, determine a lot size, I don't understand why we couldn't do the same thing there. And, so, I'm asking, do you see, do you foresee a problem?
I'm across the board changed from twenty thousand to thirty.
Well, I'm not.
There could be another zoning district, like, sort of a, I don't want to use the word transitions, not the right word, between A one and, and R one, but something that's, um, a little more conducive for a higher density than, let's say, the, um, A one district, but maybe not, um, a true R one district, but it could, you could have the same requirements, but just have a thirty thousand square foot minimum lot size.
Well, you can have an.
Just a thought.
You can have an urban, R one urban and an R one rural, or whatever, I don't know. I'm just saying, we already have designations in there, even in, in a growth boundary, we have designations in there, if your property's zoned R one, depending on if you've got sewer, water, the whole nine yards, the lot sizes continue to go down. All right, so we could say, you own R one, and you don't have utility water, and you're on septic as far as it goes, we may come in there and say, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll give you R one, which protects you more as far as that goes, but you may have to have thirty-five thousand square feet in your lot, all right?
Twenty-five thousand minimum, the way the health department requires it with a well and a septic system.
Okay, but I'm just saying, we may determine it as thirty-five.
I understand.
All right, we can come in and say, okay, we have, uh, we've got the R one, and it's gonna be in a rural area, but it has utility water. All right, we may say, instead of thirty thousand square foot, we may say, okay, we can live with twenty-five thousand square foot with that lot. All right, because we don't, basically, I don't know that we have anything outside, uh, the urban growth boundary right now that has sewer. I'm not saying it won't happen in the future, but it could, and at that point in time, we could address, address those issues. All I'm saying is, is that, I think that this would give us a little protection. We may get a few more houses, uh, from that standpoint, but it may give us a little bit more protection. Now, that being said, I'll shut up and miss it.
Well, let me give you, uh, what you did if we're going in the new court, you did that R one, which is outside the growth area, but the only reason I think you all did the R one on that is because they had sewer.
They did. Yeah, they did.
That's the only one that I can remember we've done a pretty good lot.
That's, that's true.
Outside the growth.
Yeah, but that.
And that's the only reason y'all did.
But that had to be approved by a County Commission.
Just approved it, yeah.
Which was the sewer was the big thing.
Everybody just say one word right there. We all, the wealth, or, you know, we played a house site, everything else on your new plans.
Yes.
That, uh, your square footage now would be a, a variation viewed that, with that. Uh, and that's why a lot of the pins around some of them, you know, mandated that, when I started nineteen years ago, it required, for that septic reason, like R one, you know, that lot, twenty thousand square foot, I worked on this lot, but the other lot kinda had four.
Right.
It was all in that one, you know, one hour zone, or whatever, so, the site, site plan for a house, and then us coming back to turn to the septic area, it should take care of itself on that.
Well, that, you're right, Tom, on that, but what we're getting is, is that, is the designation of outside the growth boundary, uh, in other words, if the growth, if the growth plan says we don't want higher density development outside the growth boundary, then basically what we've got is, is that we're not adopting anything other than A one outside the growth boundary, okay? Uh, based on, on the land use plan. All I'm saying is, is that, if the land use plan can be adjusted to where we do allow some R one outside, but you're still not gonna get that higher density that, that's there, because basically, if it has utility water, we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna give you R one. Which that zoning protects, if there's housing all around it, it protects that, that housing as far as that goes. And, and which County Commission, they would make determination whether or not, saying, you know what? We don't need, there's, we don't want, we don't want that density in there, and they can say, no, they don't have to rezone it. All I'm saying is, is it gives you another option outside the growth boundary to protect the people with the zoning, but it also then is, is, is gonna increase your density a little bit. So, uh, like I say, I, I'm looking at, you're picking your poison. You're either giving them a little bit more protection, but you're gonna have to sacrifice, and you may give the developer five, six, seven more, more sites, I don't know. But there again, anything that's on septic, the, the lot size is gonna be dictated by the soil and what's, what's gonna be required, plus the building site. So, you know, the twenty-five thousand, that, if, if that was what we came up with, that still may not be enough, they may have to go over that threshold just to make, just to make it work. Uh, so, I, I'm just. Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at the looks on your face, so, if we don't want to do that, if you don't want to do it, that's fine, I'm just throwing it.
I just think, uh, Mr. Terry, that, I think there's some, if you go down this road, then you are opening it up for higher density. I mean, that's, that's, we might as well just admit that right up front.
We would.
Or open it up for higher density.
But we're gonna say that.
And if.
In the lot size.
If we do that.
Okay.
Then are you gonna make the developer upgrade the roads on some of these roads that are eighteen foot wide? No shoulder.
Substandard.
Substandard roads, because there are substandard roads that are out in the county, and if you go develop that one, then you, we're gonna have to look at the infrastructure.
Okay.
If we do that.
Okay, I'm gonna.
Because that density will change the amount of traffic on that road.
It will, but, okay, so let's take this for instance, all right? So I've got an A one property out there, and there's seventy-five acres in it, and the guy says, I'm gonna be able to get seventy, try my best to get seventy-five lots in there. Do we make him upgrade that road?
I'd like to.
But that's just my thing, I don't know that.
I'd like to.
I'm not sure that we can set two standards. I'm not sure that we can hold this developer to, to road standard and this developer here to another different road. I, I don't think, I don't think state law allows us to do that, does it?
Is there, is there any way to set?
We've had one subdivision. What?
Is there any way to set density on road widths and stuff, Mr. David?
Probably, um, let me say this, we had one situation years ago, Tim would remember it, where a developer wanted to do subdivisions.
Yeah.
Old stage.
Old stage road, and we turned the plant down as being premature, um, because it would cause, um, too much added traffic on a narrow road. On a lake. R one.
That, but that's not.
In ninety-eight, they did a lot of outside.
Well.
There wasn't no growth area in ninety-eight, but.
Yeah, I, all I'm saying is, is I, I understand it as far as that goes, I, I, I know where we're at. I was just trying to look at a solution, and I was trying to think, you know, what would, i, if, and it was the one on one thirty-nine, I kept sitting there thinking, I said, but I told some of those people that spoke with me, and I said, the best thing that could happen to you is for that property to be rezoned R one, and that would protect you the most, all the way around. But I said, and I told them upfront, but I said, that has not been the policy of, of commission lately, uh, to adopt that, okay?
Because the lots are smaller in R one?
They are smaller in R one.
I'd make the same, same size.
So.
If we're gonna, if you're gonna change our zoning regulations, or the land use plan, or what do we have to change to do it, number one? And number two, are we remiss in not doing, if we're gonna do this for quote-unquote protection? Then are we remiss in not doing the overlays that we brought, talked about on the commercial corridors in this county at the same time?
Right.
Because if we're gonna allow that out, then there's trade-offs on other things.
Yes.
So if the developers want some protection, if the subdivisions wanted protection, what are you gonna do with that? If they come in and, and build a subdivision off a four-lane road, or off one thirty-nine, twenty-five seventy, uh, ninety-two, I mean, do, do we need that? If we're gonna do this, we need that other tied in with it.
I, I'm not, I don't disagree with you there, I mean, that, that's, well, you know, that's one of the things that, that I felt was pertinent, uh, going forward, uh, with this, it was that very thing, that very thing. And, uh, but, you know, I'm not sure, though I think, I think it's a good thing, but I'm not sure that, that there, that, you know, I'm not sure how County Commission is gonna feel about that. I'm not sure. Look, I've, there's somewhere on the lines on this, there's gonna be some toes that's gonna be stepped on, and probably people aren't gonna be happy with it, uh, from this thing. Is it will be the best thing for the county overall in the long run? Yeah, I think it would be.
Well, if, if, if you're talking about protections, we're, we, so we started down this road, we started with the premise that Mark brought up, seven percent. So we started, we gotta have buildable site. We said we're doing that to take away all these variances. We're doing it for protection of the people coming in. So if we're doing that, should they not be advised? If you buy this, you may have a Dollar General beside you, you may have whatever. Just to understand, if you buy on a commercial corridor in this county, there is a, at some point in time, whether in your life or your kids, there is a good chance there's gonna be something else beside you, they're gonna buy the two houses besides you, they're gonna tear it down, they're gonna build whatever. But they're all, but everybody knows that up front, when they come in and buy that, everybody knows that, when they come in and buy that on the subdivisions, they know that it's already a possibility that's gonna happen.
Yes, but I can guarantee you, there was people here tonight who spoke and saying that, that they felt like that, that was not the case. And, and, and here, here's my thing is, is this, is that when you, when you go back, and you have to predate this before nineteen ninety-eight, before we had zoning. It's because we had a hot, hot, hot mixture of this, that, what, all over the place, and when there was no zoning, and you made a purchase on a piece of property right there, you had no idea what your neighbor was gonna do there. And it caused, and that was the, the risk that you took as far as that goes. And, uh, so, but when zoning came in. Yes, and they can't do that, and they can't do this, so, I, I don't know. Uh, I, my thing was, is that, I, I, I was just looking at it from, I know we, we talked, discussed about the overlays, and I think that's a good thing. And, but, but here, I was looking at it from a residential standpoint, that I thought maybe this might be something that might help people that are outside the growth boundary, that might give them a little bit of protection. So that, that's the only reason I, that's.
And, and I'm not saying that it's not a valid point.
I understand.
And I voted against every one of the R ones outside the growth boundary.
I know.
Everyone consistently.
You've been consistent, so I'm not.
Since I've been on the board. But what, if, what I'm saying, if we're starting down this road, this is a change from what we're doing.
It is.
So if they, if the ones that were here tonight, if they want that protection, then they need to have business in this county. We cannot exist on housing. It does not pay the bills.
Okay.
It does not, at some point in time, we will go broke, or it will be so limited that we cannot fund the county out of this. So if we're doing this, why not do the whole thing in one package?
I don't have a problem with that. It's a big task, but I don't have a problem with it.
And then my question to Mr. David is, if we do this, what do we have to change to be able to do it, based on our regulations? There was a lady spoke in here about a moratorium on campgrounds or whatever, I mean, we tried that, I tried that on the subdivisions. Mr. Paul, I don't think did, but, uh, and there's other commissioners, and I'm, you know, plenty of commissioners, that that moratorium failed miserably.
Well.
Because we didn't want to do it, and, and we've got certain things, I mean, that's like, uh, and, and I, you know, we probably need to talk about the campgrounds and putting them in other zones, of course, we can't even get A two passed. So I don't know that there's much need to talk about doing that. All, all I'm saying is, if, if we're gonna do this, let's, let's make it an encompassing plan, not just start out and.
No, after we finish revising the land use plan, I think we need to take a comprehensive look at the zoning resolution.
But is there anything in the land use plan that?
Would address the issues we're talking about?
I mean, would address or prevent that, that we need to look at, Mr. David, before we do, before we pass that? And we're gonna look at it on the next item on the agenda, but is there something in there, or do we, what, what stops us from doing? Is it the zoning issue, or is it the land use plan that says, don't, don't put R one outside the growth boundary?
Well, once the, if the, if the land use plan is adopted, that, that we're amending, then, um, you're supposed to, state law says you're supposed to make, um, land use decisions in accordance with that as well. Um, but anyway, having said that.
So is it?
You know, it's, it's up to the planning commission, and ultimately, the county commission to, um, put forth the, the policies and, and goals of the land use plan into zoning form and get it, um, have it adopted, and then that's one of the best ways to, to actually implement the land use plan, if that's what's supposed to happen.
What I'm asking you is. Is it in the land use plan, or is it in our zoning that says, no R one outside the growth boundary?
It doesn't specifically say, no R one.
No, it doesn't.
It said, no, the density.
No, in, in fact, it's in the, it's in the county growth plan that, um, that identifies the. Potential and commercial activities are supposed to take place, and then, like I said a few minutes ago, that the county growth plan law says that, once it's adopted, that all land use decisions are supposed to made in, be made in accordance with it. And that means that all the areas that aren't in a, um, in a, in a growth area, or a, um, urban growth boundary are supposed to be rural areas, and they should be, um, have rural densities and so on.
So if we take.
But we don't have a thing in here.
That specifically says.
That says that.
No, we don't.
It's just been a policy.
It's a policy, it's not a statement.
If you take Chigger's suggestion and make it the same thing.
Same size.
Outside the growth boundary.
Yes.
Then you, then it, the density.
Problem solved. I don't, yeah, I don't have an issue with that, I don't, I don't have a problem.
Well, you, you may have R one because you may want that protection.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
If that's the big issue, then that's what you're looking for, you don't have to change the density.
You don't, you're just, you're just adding the protection, is what it boils down to.
What would the protection be, that you can't put single one?
The protection is, is anything, what's allowed in R one zone? Single family housing, churches and schools. Single-family housing, churches and schools.
And double ones.
Right, well, that's single-family housing.
The only difference is you're gonna, A-one and R-one are the high-speed tracks and no single ones.
Well, but there's no commercial, there's no commercial in an R-one zone.
And no commercial.
Now, that's, that's-
And if that's a protection, then that's what you're asking right there.
That's all I'm saying is, is that's a protection. You know, and, and here's the thing. In an A-one zone, we allow them to, to do a lot-
Convenience commercial.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, on lots, we're making average lots, okay? So if we come in, and we say, "We're, we're gonna let you average lots in a R-one, just like we do in the A-one," so we're keeping the, basically, the same density they're allowed to do already. So we keep that density, but what it does is, it gives them protection. But it allows then, it gives the authority, basically, with the growth plan, as far as that goes, says, "Hey, you know what? We're not increasing the density, it's just a rural area."
Exactly.
But the things allowed in this zone are reduced down tremendously.
All right, then let, let me reveal you this. If you have, if you do that R-one here, and these, on each side are A-one.
Okay.
Are you saying that you now are, you're protecting everything around there, and you're not gonna allow any commercial next to that R-one?
No, no, it can, no. If it's not, if, if, if that is, if it's zoned A-one, what's allowed in A-one is, is allowed.
Stays.
Okay? The people that are doing this, is just like you said, A-one's there, right? The R-one wants to come in, and we said, "We wanna do housing." Well, it's no different than you building something, you know, anywhere else. The allowed uses that are there, it's buyer beware, when they, when they go in there. They have to understand that, at that point in time, "Hey, this is on this way, and this is what you're allowed to go in there." If you don't do your homework, eh, eh, then basically, that's, that's where you're at. Only thing I'm saying is, is that for established residential developments that are there, and the people wanna come in here, and they wanna do what we're just right beside of it, as far as that goes, then they, we, if we gave them the R-one with a lot of averaging, outside the growth boundary, that would be the best protection that they could get, that we could give them, from a zoning system.
Now, if, if-
I don't think you'd have anybody ask.
If that neighbor, who is A-one, buys a lot next to him, can, can they come before us and change theirs to R-one?
Well, anybody can ask for anything to be changed.
Yeah.
As far as that goes. They, they would have, anybody that's outside the growth boundary can come in and request any kind of rezoning, eh, as far as that goes. Now, whether or not we make the recommendation, and whether or not county commission, both for, that's a different story. But anybody has the right to come and request for their property to be rezoned.
So, so do you have two, two separate R-ones? Or do you got R-one, R-two?
Yeah, we got R-two.
Oh, we got R-two, okay.
So, I'm just saying, we would have an R-one that has, that's inside the growth boundary, that has utility water, sewage, whatever, these are your lot sizes that are already established. If you want an R-one outside the growth boundary, then basically, what we're saying is, you're gonna do a lot of averaging, based upon, what is it, thirty-five thousand square feet? Is that what the, the, they have to average out too, or what is it?
Have to average-
In A-one?
Yeah, right now.
Forty.
We have to average forty.
Average forty. But you could get lots smaller than that, as far as that goes. Depending, the only reason we did that was, is because of your, your, different types of lots and everything else.
It can go down to third.
Yeah, it can go down to third.
The whole thing has to average forty.
Has to average forty.
Ah.
So-
Which I think-
Well, you're, you're getting that already.
You're already that.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you're not changing-
You're not changing anything. The only thing you're doing is, is the zoning protection.
All right, if, say, a guy has a farm, he's wanting to be cut up next to these R-ones.
Yeah.
Say it's seventy-five acres.
Okay.
Can he come before us and request, if he's gonna build him a subdivision?
Yeah.
Can he request that we change that, his A-one to R-one?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's his prerogative, he has that, he can do that any, anytime he wants to.
So you're gonna designate that R-one rural, and R-one urban?
Well, that's what I would think it would, it could be, very well be that, as far as that goes. It could be, they could have that designation.
What's urban?
That'd be within urban growth boundary.
What's the difference in that?
Well, you'd, you'd be inside, that's the ones that can go down to less, to higher density, inside the growth-
In the growth boundary, yeah.
I don't like urban.
And, yeah, less, a little less-
They probably don't like you, but that's a lie.
All right.
You don't get to go town unless you-
All right. I know, we've discussed this, and as far as that goes, and I, I guess the thing is this, is, is this something that you want me to put on the agenda, that you would think that we might wanna make a change of? That's the only thing I'm asking. And if you're not happy, if you just wanna leave it the status quo, we'll leave it the status quo. If you want, if you think you want to go with the change, then we'll get, try to get it on the agenda, and, and in the next couple of meetings, and try to kind of hammer something out, and go with it, so.
I'm not opposed to it being on the agenda, but I want, I want it included with the, I want the rest of that included with it, if we're gonna-
Okay.
Do it, I want that on the agenda, too.
You better have a workshop for that.
Well, I would rather don't, wouldn't want to. So-
Tell me more, Jim.
Okay.
If you do a workshop, you're not voting, meeting?
No, I, I, yeah, then hammer it out, and then you vote the next one.
Okay, but I, I do have a question, in regards to this. Because there's gonna be a lot of work on, on some of this.
You're gonna take more than one.
Well, okay, so what my question is this, and is, was really, what you think, how you feel about county commission? Is this something they're gonna be receptive to? I don't wanna get in this and do all the work, and them getting there and say,
I have no idea.
And seventy-five percent of the people say, "That's a waste of time, we don't even wanna do it." I would prefer some direction from them, to see if that's even something that they would even consider.
I think me and Mr. Paul would be glad to run up flag vote.
Well, I'm just-
Well, I don't get a vote, but I, I would feel that-
Miss Katie's in the back.
Well, it'll, it'll take, I'm sure it's gonna take a lot of explanation, as far as that goes. And there'll be a lot of questions. But the thing is this, I don't wanna go through all the work and do this, as far as that goes, and come up with something, and then, and the majority to say, "I don't want it." And I, I mean, that's just a waste of our time.
That's the chance you take.
And I, I don't wanna do that, so.
Well, then I'd, I'd do it.
The consensus is, if, if they like the idea, as far as that goes, and they're receptive to it, and they, they give me the, "Go ahead", I don't care to do, do the work. But if, if the consensus is, eh, we're, we don't, you know, and it sounds like they don't wanna do it, then I don't wanna do it.
If we're doing this for protection, and if they're getting the protection out of it, then there's some trade-offs-
There are.
That we've got to address.
Yes. Okay. All right, so, I guess my, the, the next thing would be is, is that we want to direct some of our county commissioners, at the next county commission meeting, to put this before them, to see if that's something they wanna do. And we'll have response back after that meeting, and we can go to work, either way. Is that, I mean, is that okay?
Yeah.
Are you happy with that?
Yeah.
All right, we, I mean, we got, we got nothing to lose.
Do you wanna-
I just don't wanna do all the work, and then all of a sudden-
Do you wanna come and, and ask them?
I don't care how, how it's presented.
I think it'd be good if you would, if you had.
January.
So if the mayor wants to put, you know, and, and, and the thing is, if you as board members, you wanna come to that meeting, and if they have questions, and you wanna pop in, eh, I, it doesn't bother me a bit, you know, as far as that goes. When's that meeting? It'll be county commission meeting, or-
January.
January. So, I'm just saying, that-
Second Monday's workshop, third Monday's the vote.
Well, that's actually a Tuesday issue.
All right. All right, the other one is, discussion and continued review of the land use plan. And I guess, basically, everybody got a copy tonight, correct, David?
Well, hopefully.
You got a copy here. So, your homework is, is to go and review this, and-
The changes are in red.
Yes.
And, and strike through.
Homework.
They colored it for you, Chigurh.
Yes, we gotta have a thirty-day-
So you can't vote on this next month, eh? We'll have to vote on the land use in January for planning commission, but we have to have thirty-day public hearing. So it probably won't go to county commission till April.
April, yeah.
So, eh, but you need to look at it, and we'll do, y'all can, you got even next month to ask questions, and then we'll do the-
Right.
In January, planning commission, and send it on to county commission.
Okay.
If y'all think.
All right.
And then-
Everybody good with that?
We've got twenty years.
We just-
We did, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, David, that's, that'll be our plan, review, okay?
So if we have a special meeting, what's the date?
Well, we gotta have thirty days' public notice for this body.
Before the planning-
Before they, before you vote.
Yeah.
So-
I understand, but if we were to, so we're gonna miss the January meeting for the commission? What I'm asking you is-
Well, we can't get it done.
If they have a special meeting any time during that quarter.
Well, if y'all voted for it in December, here. I mean, you gotta have it, but you gotta have a-
You can't, according to you, you said thirty days.
No, we can't get it.
What I'm saying is, if you gotta have thirty days, so we can't vote for it until January, which is after the commi, commission meeting.
Which means the county commission won't hear it till the next meeting.
September.
No.
January, I mean-
April.
Unless there's a special call, maybe do that.
What I'm asking you, is there any restriction after the thirty days on this body?
I don't think so, are they, David?
The, the county commission has thirty days, too, if they're gonna adopt it.
Oh, we got thirty days after, okay.
Thirty days after we vote?
No, there, there needs to be a public hearing with thirty days' notice for the county commission as well.
Before they vote.
Before they vote.
You'd probably wanna have a meeting and look at it, and then, adopt, adopt it a subsequent meeting. I don't see how we do it.
So, here's my-
If you agree with it.
So, basically, then, will y'all still have a work session before your meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that will be the question-and-answer time, basically, for that, for the county commission. That would probably be the best time then, as well, to present-
We've not adopted it.
No, I, I, I'm just saying, after we've adopted it, okay?
So that won't be till April?
I, I know, but what, here's, you're missing my point. What I'm looking at is, is that, when you have the work session for your January meeting, is that, we should be, we should come before regarding this R-one?
That, yes.
Yes.
Not the land use plan, because we've not, we've not adopted it.
Okay, because I think I'll get a pretty good feel after the work session, maybe. If not, if not, they'll at least have, what, another week to think about it, before we have the meeting, correct?
Yeah, so you need to come in January, to the work session.
That's the best, that's the best way, because-
Hey, big boss.
It's gonna be pretty informal, and a lot of questions could be asked, and, from outside.
Is the work session Tuesday, or is the-
The work session's the night, which is a Monday.
Okay, so Monday the night.
Yeah.
You need to come.
Like I say, everybody here is welcome to come. Eh, you know, I don't, I don't, yeah. And if you have, hey, and here's the thing. If y'all have input that you wanna, to put before, I don't have to be the spokesperson.
Oh, but we want you to.
Well, but you can speak, you know, I mean-
Now, another thing, that claims you probably be here for December meeting, so if y'all wanna, if you want him here, or you wanna change the meeting.
Well, do we, as of now, do we have anything on the agenda?
No, we don't.
The, the only thing, because-
The nine and the seventeen.
Yep. Well, if we don't, if we don't have anything on the agenda, I don't know if I would have a meeting.
I don't know anything coming in, but we can tell that, you know, we're not having a meeting in December.
Tell them we're not waiting until, yeah.
We can stay home and read this for-
Well, it takes, yeah, I know, and I just didn't know, the only reason that we'd have a meeting, if it's anything, is if anybody had any questions on this, and we would have time to address it and send it to David. But here's the thing.
Yes.
If you, if you go through this, and you see some questions, as far as that goes?
Mark it up.
Mark it up, and if you'll get Stephanie a copy, she can get it to David as well. And she can get us, you know, eh, eh, as far as that goes. Because, there's prob, there's probably gonna be some questions in there.
The changes are in red, and they're-
They are.
You're all done, so.
Okay.
I'm, in a perfect world, we'd update it all.
All right.
I see you, we did do it ten-year.
Last one's-
Or twenty-year.
This wouldn't have been an issue if I'd have put, eh, down, down the road, ten years. This would all been, this wouldn't have been a problem.
She didn't like that, was like-
I don't know why, I was thinking, I'm gonna put a ten-year date on it.
Eh, one, Katie, do you have a question?
I just want to start drinking. That, for subdivision, that area is in urban growth boundary.
We know it. We know that, yeah.
Well, when you talk about the R-one, it wouldn't have benefited them because you could have switched it to that anyway. But what would the plan if we addressed the key things? What does it mean, if everybody realized that the-
I didn't say anything when, when they were speaking, okay? Because basically, we want, there's, nothing's been submitted to us, okay? And so, everything is there, is, is, maybe proposes that whatever, okay?
You not even had nothing to damage that.
No, so, you know, and if it comes before the damage, eh, planning commission to review, here's what's, we're against, Katie. So you wanna take campgrounds out of A-one, all right? That, you know, and if this board decides to do that, then that's fine. But you realize, that it's probably gonna be April, before that could even come into play, the way the schedule works out, before it can even be done. And if they come in tomorrow, and they submit their plat, their vest, and there's nothing that we can do about it, if they meet the guidelines, and the zoning's there, that, we're stuck, okay?
Well, no, but it's not just about one subdivision, it's about the whole county. So maybe we can help later for others to know.
I understand that.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yes.
Because that's why I presented what I did today. There's conflicting regulations, whether it's in the growth boundary.
It is.
It's the city, but what guidelines apply?
The counties. The counties, the city has to apply the county guidelines.
So in the counties, it says it's gotta come off a county road.
Well, state road, that's, it's, it's the same thing.
And, and it's in an area that has substantial risk because it's in a valley, there is blind side.
Okay, that, that.
Is there a traffic study that's required?
The, they, they have addressed this issue with T dot. That was one of their first steps, because the reason I say that is because I saw a snippet of what they were doing, okay? And they were going to T dot, the very first thing before they even decided whether or not this would work or not, to ensure that it was, that they would be able to get access for what they wanted to do off of twenty five seventy, okay? That would have been something that we would have required, uh, no matter what, okay? It doesn't say that there, but, but it is a requirement. Coming off a state road, you've got to have permission from T dot stating that, that your line of sight and the, the speed that's on the road and everything else, as far as that goes, it's gonna have to meet certain requirements. That's why they hired an engineer, uh, and, and he's the one that's going through that process for him, the engineer is. But we have not seen anything as far as size, density, how many, anything like that, that's not been presented yet. So a lot of this is, is speculative to a certain extent and in generalized form, yes, there are some things that could be there. But until we actually see the finished plan and what's been, that, that the T dot has approved, it's hard, we can't make those judgments because we're, we're not engineers.
We've seen no proposal.
We've seen no proposal, yes.
I hear Tim over here telling me that's county, and you keep referring to it as state.
It's state road, it's a state road, it's a state highway.
In other words, it's gotta be either a state or a county road, you can't go off. Ground road or something.
Yeah, that, but. Yeah, that's. So, okay, so anyway, I, I understand what you're looking for here as far as changing the guidelines, okay? And taking that out, but what I'm saying is, is that, you know, that's from nineteen ninety eight, this has been in those guidelines, okay? But why, why now?
What's been in there?
Why, why, why in nineteen ninety eight did, did somebody not come before this board or the county commission and say, you made a mistake and you shouldn't put that in there? Why, why, why is that?
If I can speak from an average layperson, because never in my wildest dreams did I think I needed to study zoning regulations, which I have in the past ten days, it, it floors you. The average person that sees A one agriculture, forestry, wouldn't think they have to look at the list to see commercial businesses blended in with that. And if you look at other counties' regs, they don't.
You don't.
So it creates, you're creating your own problems because you have a, a very sloppily designed A one code.
You know, you know why it was done that way? It's because when you look at this county, when you look at this county the way it was ruled, because what you had was some of the things in there, you had a country store way over here, you had a country store over here. And you had a guy that come here when the lake was developed and he built a campground here and there was a campground here and, and vice versa as it comes around. Then zoning comes into play, but those things are already in existence, so you had those entities in this county.
So those could have been grandfathered and have a clean A one code going from that point forth?
Well, that's not what county commission decided, okay, yes.
It's a living document and our county has changed everything and has changed it to something I never expected.
No, we're true.
So we only have what we have today and what are we gonna do with it?
Well.
My opinion, it doesn't really matter that we didn't in nineteen ninety eight or whenever it was, we just are trying to identify an issue and try to make it there for county.
I agree, and that's exactly what John Neal said, that the whole county needs to be readdressed and, and look at what our priorities are as far as that goes. But it's just not one item here and one item here, it's everything, it's everything, it's gotta, it, it need, if you're gonna go through the process, it needs to be wholesale.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, okay, because it, you, you are right, it, we have changed since nineteen ninety eight to, for, I mean, for a lot of things. And there, and I agree, there, there's no things that needs to be changed, okay? I'm not arguing that point, only thing I'm saying is, is when we get into it, I want, I, I, I want us to do wholesale change.
Well, why can't we not do something about RV parks now?
What, what would you?
Well, what are you gonna do when the next person comes up here and he's in the middle of his Nether subdivision and there's an RV park proposed?
There, very well could happen.
Okay, why can't you just stop it? Why does he not ask?
Because we tried to stop the development. I'm speaking now, Beth, because we tried to put a moratorium on development and the county commission voted down, so you can't put a moratorium on the stuff. And if anybody comes in like Mr. Terry says, and they file a plan, we have no legal standing to stop that right now. You cannot stop it until you go through the process. The process is, we start the process, we do the voting, it goes, Mr. Tim and Mr. Terry, they take it to the regional planning, it goes, has to go through all of that. It comes back to the county commission and they vote on it. Until that time, anybody that walks in and presents that plan, we have no legal standing to stop them if they meet all of the regulations as set forth.
So what if it's after the January meeting and there's enough commissioners that we vote for that moratorium? I've talked to several commissioners and they are upset.
They wouldn't vote for the other one.
Okay, I think residential is a lot different than an RV transient park.
I mean, just so you know, we already have almost a hundred signatures for, in that whole area, not just in our subdivision.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing your point that, that people don't want it, okay?
And it's not, it's not.
But the point is that it's been, that it's been here all these many years, as far as that goes, it's been here. And we, we, we have revised it, we revised it because we looked at some of the things that what consider, people consider to be RV parks, that are not RV parks. They're just glorified. Yes, so.
We didn't have regs, Tim.
We didn't have regs on it, so we came in and we said, okay, let's do this, let's do this because basically we feel like we don't want the county to go this direction, alright? And so we've done that and we've had some, we've had some positive things, I guess it's happened down there, but we haven't actually zoned them out. Uh, because basically what you're saying is, is that, and here, and here's where it comes from, you can say, well, we don't want RV, RV parks in, in, in A one zones. So where do you put them? Do you put them in a zone that you know that the county will never, ever let you have one again? Is that fair?
That's why we sort of shared with you Roan County's example.
Well, I, I understand.
They forced a site, or an application to submit it and then it's reviewed just with public, the abiding property and all that, that's how laws should be handled because you have so many different types of agricultural land available. And not all are the same.
Roan County's getting ready, Roan County's getting reg, reg, ready to, um, change their RV park regulations.
I know, because they still have some issues, but. But that's all.
There's other counties experiencing it, they're the same thing. And, and Terry, the argument that what happened between ninety eight and now is growth. And yes, there's transient populations and this RV thing has blown up, so there has been change since ninety eight. There has been change in this county.
I, I, I'm not.
And we're battling that and trying to figure out how do you do it and how do you do it appropriately.
Maybe wrong, I'm just going by memory and it's been a long time ago, but back several years ago when we were having a problem with annexation and cities were. Annex and annex and annex and I think this is where this growth boundary started from, is like the cities can't come in and take all this and go. Created this growth boundary and then it's voted on every.
It's through eleven oh one.
Yeah.
So often, so I think that's where the growth, as far as I know.
It is for three cities.
It is, and, and so basically that, it's the area that the city can annex in, but the thing is, you can't annex unless the people ask you to annex.
That was changed, four years, five years ago.
She talking about her tour?
So you're wanting to. So what you're asking us to address is, is that, is to look at taking, uh, campgrounds out of the, uh, the current zone it's in and adding it somewhere else. That's what you want, that's, that's what you want us to look at.
According to you, it's good.
Where do you want to put it?
Well, I think cabins, RV, I mean, to me, RV uses group together, I, clearly, in a four shooter, someone vision is not a good spot. And most of our counties A one, so I don't have the answers, I just know that should not happen. That, we're gonna come up with, we'll get all kinds, commission will get all kinds of calls if that goes in. If it goes in, well, we can't stop it this time, but maybe we can help prevent it somewhere else on the county.
And that's true, that, that happens all the time, uh, you know.
Just like we changed it from long-term permanent campgrounds because we identified it as a problem and now we don't have that now.
Yes.
So maybe we just need to further look into our campground for a rural resort.
That's, that's an option.
I was trying to find.
Right now, the rural resort does not allow RVs.
But it's something that we could change if we wanted to. And it makes, and it makes perfectly good sense a, as far as that goes. But the thing is, is that, you know, we do have a lot of campgrounds i, in an A one that's, that's now. And, uh, so, you know, I, like I say, I'll be glad to put it on the agenda and we, we're gonna look at it the next meeting. And if this board so desires, they feel like that you want to, uh, move an, uh, uh, a campground out of an A one zone and place it in a different zone, that's your prerogative to do, okay?
You know, when you go into an area, if you're living in safe on another state, other county, whatever, if you're looking to buy a house, or you're gonna look at ten miles around you. To see what everything is done, like when you look, when you look at buying a house, that is a very, very nice neighborhood. The people are very nice, it's well maintained, you know, there's cows in the front, there's cows in the back, it's, it's a very nice neighborhood. You would never think somebody's gonna come in there and put a campground in the middle of this neighborhood. And then you think, so if you talk about, about, let's say, short-term lease, like, um, you know, Airbnb and all these type things, I have rental apps. So you, these people, they can't stay forever, they have to come in, they leave. You know, you might get a bad neighborhood one day, but they're gone, you know, and if you don't like them, you can have them put out, because you don't like where they live. So, but, you know, if you've got these campgrounds and people are there, I mean, can you not say what kind of campground it is? If you look at Anchor Down, Anchor Down, some friends camp there, it's a very nice place, you don't have like people sleeping in tents out there. It's, you know, it has standards, but you look at some of these campgrounds and they're beautiful, so can you not say what kind of standards these campgrounds have to make?
Not the ones that are grandfathered in.
Yes, that, that was.
It's a new one.
If it's a new one, we have newer guidelines, okay, as far as that goes.
Anchor Down came under the newer guidelines.
No.
Didn't it?
No, he just, no, he just did it right.
The Anchor Down, we looked at what Anchor Down did and tried to implement some things there, and the biggest things that we had was, was the length of state, okay? As far as that goes, because that was what was being abused, it was, it was really being abused. So we, we did that length of state and we add some other things as far as that goes, now.
And we put the roads in, like, where they gotta get the emergency vehicles in, so we did change a lot of things. But the ones that are grandfathered in.
We can touch, can't touch.
See, and what, what that done, the dress though, again, is not all land is of people, if it comes up on a hill and then it comes down and we're in a valley. Campfire smoke, it's gonna just hover and stay down and up.
What y'all wondering is, do you have at your house?
Do I have a campground there?
Do you have a campground?
No, but there could be one, there's one that right, maybe right across the road, though, they're looking to do one, you know? So, you know, there's, it's, it's just always that risk that you have in the county, the way, the way the county was, was zoned originally, that partials were there and, and those things are available. I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be mean, but I, I'm gonna ask you a, a question and, and here's the thing, I know where your development's at, okay? And I know when it was developed, alright? So the thing was this, was before they was residential and that was zoned R one, that property there was agriculture and it was A one, okay? So, so what happened was, is that the houses came after the farmland, which was allowed that. So it wasn't as if this just all just became poof and it, and it came there, it existed before the subdivision was even developed. So the developer, the subdivision, when he did that, if he didn't do his due diligence and knowing that this tract of land here, what could go around it, then that's on him. But the thing is this.
There's a riderway off our cul-de-sac, so the assumption was that would always be built out like our neighborhood.
And that was an assumption, that was an assumption, but that wasn't a guarantee. So I'm just saying is, is that that land there was zoned A one before the development came in there at R, it was rezoned R one to make a residential development. So when the R, when that residential development came in, it was already these hazards, which you may consider as far as that goes, they already existed. But the developer took the chance and the risk as far as that goes and says, you know what? I'm still gonna do the development, and so people have done it and they bought a house, as far as it goes. But the risk was taken when he put the development there to begin with, because there was always the potential there for certain things to come in, what, why the property was zoned, so that to happen. So that property that was there was on, was A one and it had to be requested to be rezoned R one, uh, probably. So when it became R one, that A one that was, that was already still there, was there first, it was there first. So, you know, yet the campground's just now, now may be coming, as far as that goes, but it had the potential to be there from the day it was zoned A one.
What's the best use of that land?
Well, that, that is determined by the person that, that owns the land and what they want to sell it for and what they, and when the people that buy it, what they would like to do. And we only limit that with what zoning is, okay?
But the issue, it just goes right back to your A one definition first.
Well.
And causes these, these type of issues.
Zoning is put in place to help protect the city. And I still go back to living documents, if identified a new problem, and can we please just try to work together to put their campgrounds in a rural resort or some other zoning where this doesn't happen to other people in the town?
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, you, you made a statement, that zoning is put in place to protect the people, all the people. So the people that own the property that want to develop, do they not, they don't have any rights? If the zoning laws are stated that the way they are and they bought the property under the assumption that they could do that and even though nobody else wants it, i, is that fair to them?
But what it feels like, Terry, I think for the majority of the people is that it's the other way that's always worked out. That it's that way, it's for the developer and for the that person versus the citizens of it, and the county are already here. That's what it feels like in this room and the majority of the time.
That's because you're looking at it as a homeowner, right? But what if you're looking at it as a developer, what if you're looking at it as a business owner that wants to do something in this county? What I'm saying is, is that there, there's rights that go both ways and zoning, it goes both ways. You know, here's the thing, I, I've always had qualms about this, but I'm almost to the impression that I wish we'd never had zoning in this county. We lived with it for I don't know how long, a, as far as that goes.
It only passed from one vote.
Yeah, it only passed from one vote, so it wasn't very popular.
It was only put in to slow down trailer parks.
So, so the thing is this, is that, yeah, zoning has probably protected a lot more people than you think, but there are some people that basically feel like the zoning let them down. But I guarantee you, since we've had zoning, I guarantee it's helped more people than it's hurt.
Terry, have you got a list of stuff that is allowed in A one?
Yeah, David's got it right here.
David, have you got one, you want me to read it? Listen to this, you wouldn't believe what is allowed in A one.
I don't know what's allowed in A one.
Oh, really? How'd you like to have a junkyard in your front yard? It's allowed. It's allowed. I agree, I've got one right up the road.
Okay, obviously, this is for good boys, but let me ask you something. I have a guy, that's my name, boy, saying a moratorium, that's a joke, it's not gonna go through, bloody, bloody, bloody. Now let me ask you something, have you got the plans for this campsite yet?
No.
Nothing's been filed.
Nothing's been filed, everything that we're talking here is speculative.
Won't be filed with this bunch.
We, we won't see it when he does file, it goes to bounds.
It will be going to Danres Regional Plan.
If you don't have a set of plans, what is it gonna hurt to put a moratorium on and give it time to look at your land use and your zoning?
If it comes or not, no, that they're. It, you know, it should be across the board and so, uh, anyway, alright, Tim, we got any other business?
Well, do you want to have a meeting in December?
Uh.
David won't be here.
What's, what's your pleasure, you want off for Christmas?
I don't have anything on me.
It'll be before we meet, we, we, we would meet again. And we would, we would actually come, we would actually come to the work session before we have our meeting in, in, in January. But the thing is, is at least I know in January, I'm gonna have a feel for whether or not this other work's gonna be cut out for us. That's gonna take some of this stuff off my, off our agenda. And the only thing we're gonna have left, basically at this point in time, it looks like, is the growth plan, because there's nothing else, right now scheduled being on there. Or the land use plan, it's not a growth plan, it's land use.
I don't have anything.
So.
Make a motion, we don't think so, Jim.
Alright, I got a proper motion.
January?
January.
Is that a second?
Second.
Alright, on favor, aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that'll be the case. Alright, so that's our, any other business besides that, Tim?
No, sir.
Alright, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Say it's adjourned.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.